It is 8:03 a.m. It is Saturday, July 27th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order. Would City Secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Heiser? Zuniga? Harris?
Here.
Parsley?
Tobias?
I'm here.
That's five, four members present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments period. I know most of the folks here, I don't see any comments formed. Does anybody want to come and speak? All right, seeing none, we're going to close citizen comments. Next up is Agenda Item Number One. Consider an approval of a resolution appointing Geneva Garza as Civil Service Commissioner.
Good morning, Mayor and Members of the Council. I'm coming this morning as the interim Civil Service Director, asking for reappointment of Commissioner Geneva Garza to the Civil Service Board.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Geneva Garza to the Civil Service Board. Motion by the Mayor, second by the Mayor pro tem. Is there discussion on the motion? Follows favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is a public hearing. A public hearing concerning the expansion of the boundaries and approving an amendment to the Final Project and Finance Plan for Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Four. This is, go ahead, Ms. McCall.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing for the expansion, Turrs Number Four. You can kind of see the highlighted area for that. We're actually hoping just to open the public hearing today and continue it to the August 6th meeting and have additional consideration at that meeting. So this is just opening it. We notified for this day. We also notified in addition for the August 6th date as well. So if we could do that, that would be great.
Okay. If there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, I'm going to leave the public hearing open. Move to Agenda Item Number Three. Receive a presentation, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction regarding the city manager's proposed operating and capital budgets for fiscal years 2024 and 2025.
All right, well, good morning, Mayor and Council. It's good to be with you today. Thank you for the time. I know this is early. We do have a lot of information for you on our budget that we're going to be presenting to you today. It will be a joint presentation between Provez and I. I'm going to take the lead on the first 40 or 50 slides and then leave the last 70 or 80 for Provez with some of the detailed information. We also have a lot of information here and a lot of staff that's available. They're all at the back, but we still see them. And if there's any questions that Provez or I can't answer for some reason, we do have staff that's available to assist with answering those questions. So we'll go ahead and get started. Number of different objectives that we have for the presentation today. First, we'll talk a little bit about the budget process, the overview of that process, our new strategic plan, then some of the key budget initiatives and focus areas, the proposed fund financials for '24, '25. And then Provez will detail the capital improvement program spending plan, the next steps. And you had asked us at a couple of meetings ago to come back with some options for your council budget. We'll have some information for you on that and some options for you to consider. So first up is the budget process overview and strategic plan. And this is an overview of all the different things that we've done with the budget process. As you know, we changed the budget process this year to make sure you had more time to spend on some of the key topics that were going to be coming forward in the budget. And that's required a lot more time and effort from the council to do that, but we hope that that's been a much more in-depth review of some of the topics and departments that are being coming forward. I personally believe the budget is the most important policy document that you approve every year. And for that reason, we spend a lot of time with you on it. If it's not in the budget, it's an interesting conversation generally, but if it's in the budget, it gets done. And so that's why we spend a lot of time with you on it. So this process started back in February with the council visioning workshop. And then in February, we held a number of different discussions with you about building inspections, our street pavement analysis and maintenance funding plan. We presented to you in April, the community survey results. I'll go back through that very quickly with you in just a moment. And then in May, June, and July, we presented a number of other topics to you detailing various different parts of the budget that we'll highlight for you today as well. You do have a few more dates after today to go through the budget. On August 6th, we'll come back and have a few more topics for you for economic development, performance management, and lean government program, which I'll mention in a moment. We also have our water and wastewater cost of service report that we'll be coming back to you on August 6th. We'll touch on that just briefly in this presentation, but you'll have a much more detailed presentation on the 6th. And then on the 20th, there'll be a public hearing. Then we'll ask you to consider a first reading of the budget and tax rate and various fees. And then on the September 3rd meeting, we'll ask for the final approval of that. So community survey results, again, this is a review of some of the things you've seen before. This is, really starts at the beginning of the budget process to get feedback from the community to see what are the areas of focus that we need to have. All of the green areas are good, right? These are satisfied areas that you look at from the survey. The blue is neutral, and anything in red is something that we pay a lot of more attention to. That's dissatisf- dissatisfaction, dissatisfied ratings, if I can speak this morning, that we have for the community survey. So most of these particular areas are good. As you get into some of these particular areas, you do see that there are serious concerns in the community about public transportation, availability of jobs, arts and culture, affordable housing, and so forth. These are areas that you'll see in some form or fashion addressed in this particular budget and wanted to mention to you why some of those things are in. It's because they're concerns to the community, and that's why we're moving them forward. We also did a word cloud for the community survey, and I thought this was very interesting, wanted to mention it to you. What residents love is that it's a small town, it's close to Austin, it's got a community feel, a very family-oriented environment. That's some of the things that people love about Kyle. But what do they want changed? It's very clear, traffic, roads, congestion, and infrastructure are things that the community is wanting us to address among a number of other things. So again, this budget will try to address many of these items. And then you can see, one of the other things we did this year is we created a budget survey on our website between July 1st and July 22nd, and we asked residents to chime in and say, what would be the most important things that you would like us to consider in this upcoming budget? And I'm pleased to see that we had over 275 responses, so we thought that was a really good response for a survey like this. A lot of times, people glaze over when you ask them about budget, but priorities is something that's really important for us to get a good understanding. And you see some of the same topics there. Police and public safety was the number one item on this particular survey, water and wastewater infrastructure, streets and transportation, followed by the rest of the items on the list. A lot of these will be addressed, all these top items will be addressed in some way in this budget, so wanted to mention that to you. We also are proposing the city's first-ever strategic plan as part of this budget. This is our plan that we've been working on with the council over the last several months. It incorporates the various community feedback that we've had, the council feedback, the staff feedback over the last several months. There's a number of strategic outcomes and goals identified by council in the visioning workshop. We hired, as you remember, we hired an outside facilitator to help us go through that process and guide those discussions and develop some consensus. And then after that, the staff also had a similar type of retreat with the same facilitator in April. And then from that, we developed a variety of goals and objectives based on those overall council priorities. And so in your backup, you have a draft of that strategic plan. I know you've seen it before, but we're going to be asking you to consider that as you bring forward the budget. That, it really, I think the strategic plan is what we believe is a foundational element for the budget process, is that you want your policies and your priorities and your plan to drive the numbers in the budget, not the other way around. And it's really important to have the right plan, because even just a small deviation of the direction of the city has a tremendous impact. And I thought this was interesting for you, is I put on here, over the next five years in this particular budget, we expect the city to spend about $1.6 billion. That's a big number. And even a 5% or 10% change in direction, it ends up being a lot of money. So we want to make sure that we're heading, we know the target we're trying to hit, and we're putting the resources and the staff and all of the different things that go with those programs in the strategic plan and budget to make sure that it happens. Billion with a B, big number. So some, these are the strategic outcomes that were identified by the city council during our visioning workshop. Sustainable and resilient infrastructure, excellent and accountable city government, thriving and prosperous economy, safe and welcoming community, and vibrant and fun destination. We also crafted the vision statement that you see here. These are things that you're going to see driving this budget process. And so help us budget for those outcomes that are identified, those things that you identified in the strategic plan. We've identified tasks with timelines to be completed. Those items are also assigned to specific departments, so there's ownership and accountability. It's not just something that gets done by someone, it's a specific department with a specific timeline that we're putting in. We have 65 major items to be completed next year. That's in your strategic plan. And then in addition to that, each department's going to be asked to create their own strategic plan, which ties back to the citywide strategic plan. So again, as your priorities are set, your goals and objectives, we're drilling that down into the organization so that everybody knows how they contribute to making those things happen. We have a number of different things included in this plan over the next year. That includes the design and construction of a new sportsplex, and we'll be talking more with you about that on August 6th to continue that conversation. Creation of new parks and their reinvestments in our current park system. Design and construction of a variety of key water and wastewater projects. We'll talk about many of these today. Construction, of course, of the voter-approved bond program that was approved back in 2022. And we have a variety of other transportation initiatives that we're going to show you today as well. We're also proposing the enhancement of customer service through the 3-1-1 system and the improvement of operational efficiency through our lean government and performance management programs. So a lot of stuff, but all of that is in this proposed budget, and we'll talk more about that today. Okay, that's the first 11 slides. We've got 124 left. We're going to try to keep going. Key budget initiatives and focus areas. I'm going to talk about these six particular areas with you in detail. I think each of these have major impacts on the budget. Each of these have key areas that we're trying to address for the community, but these are the six focus areas that we looked at. Up first is operational improvements and cost containment initiatives, and I believe these are really important as we start looking at the budget to make sure we have a good foundation moving forward, foundational elements to make sure we're taking care of our operations and using every dollar most efficiently. We have a number of different things that we've implemented this past year and many more that are planned, and so I'm going to go through those with you. The first thing I want to mention is we've created a strong business team, and they are focused on customer service and accountability. Very proud of the team. Many of them are sitting back here, but I think we've really assembled an outstanding team that'll help us accomplish all the things that you want to accomplish in this organization. Some of the things that we've done recently is improve the city council agenda management system and process. We've implemented that new electronic agenda management system over the last few months, which increased the transparency of agenda materials for both the council and the public. We've really worked to make sure your materials are very accurate and that you have a lot of details to consider your business when it comes before the council. We've also engaged the community, enhanced community engagement and transparency. We've created a quarterly newsletter. It's mailed to every address every quarter. Also, I have a weekly Friday report that's posted online from my office. And we've also posted the responses to open records requests online as well. They're displayed for everyone to see what's been received previously and what's been published out on the website on our GovQA portal. We've also created a centralized purchasing function. This really helps us manage our procurement and contract management functions more efficiently and helps us comply with all the various contracts that are out there. This is a, it's somewhat of a back office function, but it's very, very important to make sure it's done correctly to maximize the operations in the city. And in the past, that function was decentralized, and it led to inconsistent processes and sometimes ineffective contract management. So we're really proud that we've implemented that this year. We also have a number of other improvements planned over the coming year. One of those key elements is the creation of the new 3-1-1 Customer Service Center by March of '25. I believe this will be one of the biggest increases in customer service that the city's ever seen. I've done these in other cities that I've been a part of, and we're really excited to bring this type of technology and program to the city. Just with one number or one click on your app, any service of the city will be at residents' fingertips, and we'll also have all that data and tracking to make sure we're managing those operations really well. So we're excited to bring that forward to you, and that'll be included in this budget. We're also launching a lean government initiative. Some of you may have heard of Lean or Six Sigma. It started in the manufacturing operations. Toyota created this many years ago, but it's been adapted to lots of different environments, and governments is one of those, where you take a process and you try to look at how things move through your organization to make it more effective and more efficient. There's a formalized way to do that, and we're going to be launching that. And on August 6th, Jesse will be presenting some of the details about how we're doing that, so you'll have a much better idea of how that program works. But then over the coming months, we'll be showing you specific projects, what improvements have been made, and how that's impacted the efficiency and effectiveness of the organization. We're also developing a performance management and open data program. This will be a really effective way for us to link our strategic plan, our focus and objectives to our key performance indicators, and so you'll see that coming forward very soon. And you've also approved those contracts with OpenGov on April 24, and we expect that to go live very quickly this fall. Some other things we've been doing on cost containment to make sure that we're managing every dollar appropriately is we've had a number of different things across the organization, and I wanted to take a moment just to highlight a few of the major ones that we've implemented. The first is evaluated the building inspection process, and we've proposed an in-house inspection program instead of the outsource model. As you recall, that change will save the city approximately $1.7 million annually by making that change. We've also completed the benchmarking analysis and recommended new development services fees to better offset our actual costs that we incur and align with our peers. That's also a very substantial change, about $1.7 million in additional revenue that the city will get on an annual basis. We've also been improving our utility building operations. We've increased our customer service standards. We updated our policies, been looking at data-driven performance metrics, and we've increased our collection rate to over 99% for utilities, which is a very significant collection rate, and that generates another $2.5 million per year in revenue. One of the other back office things that we've been doing, not as perhaps interesting on the outside, but it's very important to us of how we manage our staff, is implementation of a new electronic timekeeping and attendance system. A lot of this has been paper-based. It takes a lot of time and effort. It's inaccurate, and lots of issues with it. We're really looking forward to getting that moving in the next few months so we can implement all of those different cost-saving measures. We've also been looking at our staff and the number of positions we have and where those positions are placed. We've reviewed our operations very carefully over this past year and increased the efficiency of the team. This budget proposes the net elimination of 10 FTEs. The Assistant City Manager, Director of Public Works, and Director of Human Resources positions were eliminated. That saves the city about $867,000 per year. And with the new 3-1-1 service, our centralized procurement, payroll, and call-taking operations, that's allowed us to remove some of these siloed operations around the city and inefficient service model that we had in some particular areas. That's allowed us to eliminate another seven FTEs. That reduces our costs by about $589,000 just with those seven FTEs. And it also allows what we call a soft cost savings in the Water Utilities Fund, about $287,000. If not for this change, we would have had to add additional staff to perform other functions. So it's a soft cost savings, but it is real, and we wanted to note that. In total, those reductions that I just mentioned for those 10 FTEs is about $1.5 million in cost savings this year in this budget. So this is in the budget before you, so we're really proud to be able to bring that forward to you. We've also been looking at a new legislative program. We've created that. We've applied for over $100 million in grants. It's a very significant number, a lot of zeros on that. As you know, we had Congressman Kassar here with us just a couple of weeks ago. We presented a million-dollar check. We hope to have many more of those coming forward, much larger amounts. There's two in particular that we've applied for, for the Chrissy Grant Infra Grant for about $49 million combined for some work. We're hoping to hear back on that in the next 30 to 60 days. Hopefully, we'll have good news and other very large checks to present at some point. We've also prepared the new water and wastewater impact fee study. You guys took a look at this earlier in the year, and this is one of those studies that when you look at it on its face, you may wonder, well, it's an interesting study. Does it just collect dust on the shelf? But this one actually generates revenue and about $6.2 million in revenue that offsets other costs we would have to pay from ratepayers. So that's incorporated in this budget, too. So combined, all of these things that I've just shared with you generate about $13.6 million in annual cost reductions and increased revenues for the city. So $13.6 million is a very big number. Without these kinds of operational improvements and cost containment measures, we would not be able to have a budget like we're having today. So this does work hand-in-hand, is really a foundational element to bring us forward a budget like this today. Okay, we're rolling. I'm going to try to keep it interesting. Slide 20. Organizational excellence and strategic service delivery. This is another focus for us. There's a lot of different ways to look at organizational excellence, and I've just got a few things for you on these next few slides that I think are interesting. One of those is to try to assess our overall efficiency. This is not a perfect way to do this, but it's one way is to look at the number of employees we have per 1,000 residents. You can see Kyle is at 6.8 employees per 1,000 residents, so that's still, even with all the positions that we're talking about adding this particular year, we think we're still very efficient compared to all the other cities across the Austin metro region. We also look at our assessed value per capita, and if you look at Kyle, even though we've grown tremendously based on the 2023 values, we're still relatively low on an assessed value basis per capita. It's growing, but we still trail some of our peers. So we're more efficient on the number of employees we have, and we generate less revenue per capita than other cities. So I think that's an interesting combination. I know the mayor loves this chart. It's a bit complicated, but I do think it's interesting to show you over the last 10 years or so, how much sales tax per capita do we generate? And if you look for Kyle, which is this purplish color, the third from the bottom, you can see for many years, we've trailed a lot of our peers on sales tax per capita. I don't know who's driving, but I like that. Who's driving that? It's magic. I don't know how I'm just talking. Maybe it's Marco in the back. But that is the chart that shows you your sales tax per capita, and it, you can see, it's really grown over the last two or three years significantly. We're hoping that in 2024 and '25, with some of the projects that you've recently approved, like the New Quest project on the Caraway track, that this will continue to grow. And what that means is Kyle then becomes that regional destination for services, restaurants, retail, those kinds of things. And so those dollars help offset costs that would otherwise be borne by the residents of Kyle. So I think it's an interesting chart. We've got a long way to go, but I do believe we've made very strong progress over the last few years. We also look at organizational excellence in terms of our employees, of course, and we want to make sure that we have an employee-based, excuse me, a market-based employee compensation and benefits program. The council's been extremely supportive of this. Over the last couple of years, we have identified our 10 peer cities throughout the Austin and San Antonio corridor that we compete for, for talent. We've also worked on that compensation philosophy, benchmark our comparisons and jobs to those cities, and we'll be putting in a new salary structure based on the paying compensation plan that the council approved just a few months ago. Our whole hope here is to be an employer of choice, the best in the region, and we want to do that by offering great pay, great benefits, great culture, and great projects. And I think through all the things that the council has been letting us work on, those projects are excellent, and you've been very supportive of the team, so I think we're definitely down that path. For this year, we're proposing a 4.5% merit increase for employees. That's about a $967,000 cost for all funds. We also are funding the police increase for year three, their step program, $387,000, is in accordance with the meet-and-confer contract. And I'm also proposing for this year an additional $450,000 for police sworn positions to make adjustments in their pay, to put them in a more competitive position. We've looked at, police in particular has been a very challenging environment to recruit and retain officers, and that's nationwide, not just here in this region. It's been very challenging, and so everyone has been increasing pay, and we've fallen a bit behind on that. This particular budget recommendation will put us in that top 25% of our region that we compete against, and we're really proud to bring that forward. So I'll have some additional details in just a moment on that. We've also had some funding for other equity adjustments as we finalize our pay study. If we determine that there's a particular class or group of employees that are below market, we can adjust those as well. And as we've talked before, we're also looking at deferred compensation program to review that and make sure it's the best program for our employees as well. $25,000 is included in the budget for that. So here's some analysis for you for our police sworn staff. In the middle column is the entry-level salaries. So this is step one position for some of these positions as October 1 of 2023. You can see our police officer was eight out of 11, corporals were seven out of 11, and sergeants and commanders were dead last, 11 out of 11. So with the new changes that we propose for you on October 1, police officer will be third out of 11. I do always want to caveat this to, that depends on what other cities do as well. So other cities will move as well. Yes, sir, it's a moving target. And we did take the number three city and add 3% to it to see what it would take to be above them. If they go up 5% or 6%, then it could change things, but it's nevertheless a strong move for us to move up into this area. Corporals will be five out of 11. And then on sergeants and commanders, we've moved those up 6.5% each. We still have some work to do on that, and I'm going to be visiting with the chief and our HR team over the next couple of months to finalize perhaps some additional funding and dollars for these positions as well. One of the things that we looked at when we looked at the commander positions is they're different across the different organizations, and some cities will have captains and lieutenants and other ranks. We don't always have those, and so there may not be apples-to-apples comparisons. So we're going to spend some time going through that, but we do have funding in the budget to address that as well. We're just not quite sure exactly what those will be. So really positive move for police. We're pleased to have that. So some of the other strategic efforts that we've completed, and then I'm going to talk to you about some of the other ones coming forward. So we did the police staffing analysis, the matrix staffing study. You'll see the results of that in this budget and the recommendation. The pay and compensation study I mentioned to you, the water and wastewater impact fee study, pavement condition analysis and assessment, our reclaim water master plan, the new comprehensive plan for planning, and the cost-of-service study for water and wastewater rates. These are all plans that are being put into action in some way in this budget that drive change, revenues, and operations. And they, when we bring these programs to you, they're strategic in that they really make a difference in how we operate and our overall cost effectiveness and efficiency. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to go over the police components budget?
Yes, ma'am. I do have a few slides on some of the enhancements that I'll talk about in a little bit, or if you have questions, then we can...
Right, where you have 11 out of 11 for police commander. Are there any type of grades? And even with that raise, they still remain in position?
Yes, ma'am. Even with a 6.5% increase, they're 11 out of 11. So what we're trying to look at is, are our commanders equivalent to an Austin commander or a San Antonio or a Round Rock or other cities? Or do they have some other ranks that is probably more appropriate for us to benchmark to? The chief and I've had a number of conversations on that. We think there's some comparability between cities, but not all, so we want to address that further, but we need to make sure it's apples-to-apples comparisons.
We just got a new commander, right, chief?
No, ma'am, we have three, and we've had three...
So we have three now?
We currently have three commanders, just as of the recent budget.
It's not good to see 11 out of 11. We're not going to be satisfied with that either. Okay, so other things that we have for this particular budget that you'll see is the water and wastewater master plan. $500,000 has already been funded for the water plan, but we're proposing additional $750,000 for the wastewater master plan. I know those are incredibly high figures, but they're very capital-intensive businesses, and we have to make sure that we invest those dollars in the right way. The parks master plan, you've already approved that for approximately $250,000. That's underway. We have a transportation master plan that's proposed for $400,000. A street impact fee, or what's called here an adjacent lane mile fee study. We want to take a look at that and make sure that fee is appropriate for the cost that we're seeing. It hasn't been updated in several years, so we believe it needs to be looked at. We're also proposing a facility master plan study as well. We're going to be assessing our fleet and fueling operations, a formal indirect cost allocation plan. This is something accountants love to talk about. I'm a recovering accountant, but this will help us decide and understand what costs in all the various funds should be borne by those cost centers and how much should be borne by the general fund. In many cases, the general fund is absorbing costs that should be borne in other funds, so this will help us have a plan that addresses that. what costs in all the various funds should be borne by those cost centers and how much should be borne by the general fund. In many cases, the general fund is absorbing costs that should be borne in other funds. So this will help us have a plan that addresses that. Stormwater drainage fee, it's been many years since that's been looked at as well. So we want to take a look at those costs and consider that. We're also proposing a citywide risk assessment analysis, and this will help us understand where are some of those financial and operational risks that we have across the organization? And then what kinds of reviews do we need to do of those to make sure that we're doing things right? So an example of that would be to look at our cash handling procedures, our overtime procedures, our payroll processing. Well, how are those being done? Are there risks? Do we need to be looking at doing those differently? Hotel occupancy taxes, how do we collect those and verify that those are the right ones, that we're getting the dollars that we need? And there's audits and things like that that you can do for those. And then we do have the development code rewrite in here as well for $500,000. That's another large item, but it will take us several months to go through that with a consultant to rewrite our development code, which hasn't been rewritten in many, many years. So it does need updates. Okay. Slide 29, 100 to go. Water and wastewater utilities. We have many different initiatives planned in this budget for water and wastewater. The water master plan is underway. We expect that to be completed in 2025. We're also going to be looking at water supply options, a variety of other ones. You know, Arwa is coming online in early next year, which will be very good to have that, but we need to be looking further out. We're looking at actually a 50-year water plan, and some of that will include an investment or loosely a review of possible indirect or direct potable reuse, aquifer storage, all kinds of things that we're looking at to see what's the best way to handle that long term. I mentioned to you the wastewater master plan. We do have an update or an upgrade of the existing plant that is ongoing right now. It's under design. We expect to be under construction soon with that new permit by next year. That's a $100 million project. The question is, is what else do we need to be doing long term? And where does that need to be in the city? I mentioned to you Arwa. Coming in February 25, that's another 1.7 million gallons per year in capacity and supply. But we're also looking at, how can we advance that water supply up in 2027 as well to provide even more capacity out of that line? We think there's another 2 million gallons per day or more that we can get from that water, and so we'll be bringing that to you to see that in the future. We're also putting in money to add some of the reclaimed water system to our parks. Right now, none of the parks have a reclaimed water system. We are looking at the Sportsplex. I know you guys know about that particular project. We've also included another $2 million in this budget to deploy that reclaimed water to some parks. Pickler Water Leaf, we think, is right next to the plant. Would be probably cost-effective to put that there, but there's some others as well. And then we have $2.5 million in the budget to reduce what we call INI infiltration and inflow into the wastewater lines. And we've got $2.5 million in there for water line repair, replacement, and slip lining, where they go in and leave the line there, but put a coating inside the line so it prevents that kind of infiltration coming in. When rainwater's coming to lines, it goes into the wastewater plant and impacts our plant.
So those are projects you expect to go off this fiscal, this coming fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
Yes, sir. You've seen this chart before, but just wanted to mention to you our short-term supply and demand projections that we have for water. You can see the two different line graphs are the demand projections with and without restrictions. You can see for '24, it's going to be a narrow margin. But we believe with this rainfall that we've had this year, we're in very good shape for 2024. And going forward to '25, '26, '27, and '28, you have many more supply elements coming online to provide a lot more flexibility for the water system. So that starts with 2025, having the Arwa line come in. That's very good. But as I mentioned to you, we'll continue to look at these things. And looking a little further afield, Phil, get you a much better plan for a long-term water supply system.
Brian, on that?
Yes, sir.
Going back to that, so the black line is what would be without restrictions, correct?
That's right. That's our projection.
Somebody's gonna look at that line and think that we're really close. Really, it's a gray line because we've got our restrictions in place.
That's the reason for that, yes, sir. Is if you were to say there are no restrictions, you can water your yard every day. That's the projection what we would have for demand.
And can you talk a little bit about how the water master plan is going to help us with this?
So the water master plan takes a look at our demand projections of all the different... And this has our estimate of new development that's going to occur over the next few years. They'll take all of that into the model of looking at every single development piece of land that we have and the expectations of when it's going to develop, and they create a demand forecast for what kind of water we were going to need and where it's needed. So this is also looking at it just aggregate as the whole city. But we have pressure planes that have to be managed, storage tanks that have to be designed to make sure we can meet that peak flow, that when everybody comes home at night and turns on the water, or in the mornings is taking showers or watering their yards at those peak times, can we meet that flow? And can we have the right pressure in the system? So the water master plan will look at supply just at the aggregate level. What kind of supply do we have and what do we need? And then how do you deploy that water in the most effective way through the community?
Is it software-based? Is there going to be actual, like, you know, calculations and things like that?
Mike, do you want to come up to the...
I'm not trying to... It's relevant because we're spending a lot of money on it, and it's...
Yeah, Mike, why don't you come up and address that if you don't mind?
One of the big topics this year. And I will say that it seems to me like every time you start focusing on one area, it's the other area, like droughts to flood, flood. I feel like, just saying, like, let's take a look at our stormwater infrastructure as well. Because we had a wet summer and heading in, if we have a, you know, big hurricane season, that's also important.
Yeah, so it's definitely going to be data-driven. Where part of the master plan is updating our water system model, identifying weak points, identifying points where we need to upsize our system. And like, the city manager's talking about our pressure planes, identifying how we can do a little bit better job of interconnecting those planes with the entire system. So yeah, it'll be data-driven, I guess.
How long before we start getting the... Like, sometimes these plans stay in draft form for years, I've noticed.
We're working right now. We're actually, some of the developments that are being proposed in the city, our water master plan is already going through an extensive remodeling. And I don't mean like dressing it up, but remodeling with the data. And so we're already using that on one of the projects we're working on in North Point. We're using the information we've already gathered as part of the existing, or the water master plan we're working on. But we hope to have by the end of this year, get some really strong data and have it complete by the first of next year.
So we're...
So, Mayor?
Posted for adoption?
Yes, sir. Yeah, this is going to be one of those that we'll be bringing back to you probably after the first of the year. They expect to have a draft by the end of this year. We'll be looking... It's a very complex technical document. So we'll be looking at that with the staff and then bringing that back, having work sessions with the council on that, and ultimately asking you to adopt that plan. But, you know, it's a lot of interesting components to it. If you think about ground storage tanks, what sizes should those be? How big should the pumps be to deliver the water? How big should the pipes be in what parts of the city to deliver all that? There's a lot to it. Supply is a huge component. You have to have the supply. That's what everybody thinks about, but there's a lot of other technical details that go with it. We're building a 3.5 million gallon storage tank over on 1626, but there's many of those other places that we need to be building those as well.
So we're using that, and Tim and I use it as recent as just yesterday, talking about a new development. Will they give us their information? And they ask us, can we provide the water? And we've already got part of that model completed. So we were using that yesterday to try to find the right answer for them. So it's a work in progress, but we hope to have it completed by the first of next year.
I have a quick question. I'm sorry. When you're talking about refilling during this peak times, because that has been the main complaint that I always get is the times that people can water their yards. And you're telling me that we need to refill. So it is a capacity issue that we're having, that we have to refill at those times when they're peak usage?
It's more, yeah, I guess that's one way to put it. It's more of an operational issue for us because we try to maintain a certain level of pressures throughout the system. And like the city manager was saying, when we go through those peak times, early morning, you know, when everybody's getting up, taking a shower, and then when they get home in the evening and, you know, doing their business in the evening. So we have to address, and we try to sort of peak shave a little bit to address that. And so as we go through that process, you, on the... I just kind of lost my train of thought, but on that issue, yeah, we do do that.
So it's like a staffing kind of thing that during the peak times for people to be regulating that nobody is getting water at the wrong times?
Yeah, like in the, late in the evening, you know, that's when we try to do most of our refilling. And that's why we have a very narrow time period for irrigation because we have to maintain the levels in our tanks to maintain pressure.
So you have to refill the elevated storage tanks, the ground storage tanks in the off-hours?
Is it a capacity of the storage tanks that...
Part of it.
It's an issue?
Well, it's just, so it's a water management. That's more what it is than a capacity. So you don't want to, I mean, like we were mentioning, when you get to the, start doing the peak... Oops, sorry about that. When we get to the peak levels, then that's when you want to manage that a little bit closer.
Okay.
The other component that will come out of this plan is an update to our drought contingency plan and an overall conservation plan so that we can implement something all year round about conservation. And we'll have actual trigger points that will indicate what state of drought contingency that we need to go into.
So it'll have all the recommendations that's in this coming model?
Correct, yes, based on data, yes.
And you'll see the peak flow data as well. That's one of the things, you know, this is an average day, but at peak times, can you support 7 or 8 million gallons for two hours? Can you support that? And what, bless you, and what kinds of things do you have to do? It's an interesting system, and we look forward to kind of sharing all that data with you. Hopefully that answers the questions. I know those are some technical questions, but...
Yeah. For me, I guess it's having that data and making sure that, I guess, not just as a city, as a state, we consider the drought we came through and we're slowly peaking out of. But what do you call it? It's something that we should always implement is smart water usage as a city. But I'm hoping the entire state looks at it. I know East Texas doesn't have that issue.
Right.
You know, when you look at, you know, for the first time in our lifetime, we saw the Rio Grande Valley, you know, in a drought. We've seen Central Texas in a severe drought. But I think this is a great wake-up call for us to conserve water, you know, find a model that'll conserve water year-round, even when we have an abundance of it. So...
We totally agree. It's been great to see the rain. It's been a great July and June, but it won't always be like that. We know there will be other droughts, especially if you start thinking out 30, 40, 50 years in the future, there will be peaks and valleys. And so we need to be thinking about, how do you manage that for the whole system? And we've got four water systems, water supply sources right now. We may need more, and we likely will need more. So we have a diversification of supplies and a good system that can pump all that water to where we need it to go. All right. Thank you, Mike. Stay close. All right. And then we have a number of additions, staffing additions for water and wastewater utilities. This is a summary of what Mike presented to you guys just about three weeks ago. So there are 18 new positions in water and wastewater. This is to help us with all the different technical components of the water system, make sure we have the right capacity of the team to handle those things. We also have some positions in public works and engineering. One that I'll call your attention to is the Director of Transportation and Traffic. It's a position that I'm proposing in this coming year. As we look at all the different transportation things that are going on in the city, it's somewhat mind-boggling, and we need more focus on that and more effort on it. So I'm proposing a position dedicated to that particular function. We're going to talk to you in a moment about all the different transportation. You know about the road bond package, but that's just a piece of many other things that are coming forward, and we want to stay on top of that. And then in engineering, we're proposing a land acquisition manager and land acquisition agent. These are two positions. As you start looking at the number of right-of-way parcels that we're acquiring, it's the complexity of the organization is growing very, very rapidly. They're complex transactions. Just to get a quarter acre, you know, piece of right-of-way, it takes an enormous amount of time and effort to do. Some of these, as you know, are going to go to condemnation. They require oversight to go all the way through that process. For the road bond package itself, I think we're 250 to 300 parcels that we will need in total just for that piece, and we have a number of other projects around the city. So we think these are critically important. We also have a number of equipment recommendations for you. I won't go through all of these. Again, Mike, I think went through this presentation just a couple of weeks ago. $2.7 million in equipment for the various operations that we have. That's included in this budget. We do have a five-year capital improvement program of $339.6 million. That's a very big number for water and wastewater. So we see the demands and the complexity of the city rising, and we're funding that. We do have $99.6 million, almost $100 million of projects for this coming year. Here are some of the projects. So the wastewater treatment plant, as you guys know, we've been looking at the access road that would go instead of through the Water Leaf neighborhood, that would go down to the Hayden-Rike Road on the other side of the plant. That will actually make it, the plant, a little bit easier to operate from the trucks that are coming through. And it also makes us a better neighbor to that neighborhood as well for Water Leaf. So all those trucks and initiatives won't have to be coming through there. We've included $4.5 million for that project. We also have the expansion project funded. That would, again, complete the design and begin construction next year. $6 million for '25 and $101 million in the five-year CIP to upgrade that plant. Very expensive and important project for the city. The reclaimed water fill station, I believe Mike talked about this as well. A million dollars for '25 and 1.5 million for CIP. And you may be asking, well, who in the heck wants to come by and get reclaimed water? Well, it's construction. And so construction trucks, instead of using our potable water systems, we want them to be able to use our reclaimed water and to use that for construction activities. And it's also will become a revenue center for the city that will more than pay for its costs over time and be a net benefit to our water and wastewater ratepayers, and also reducing our demand that's on the system. So we're really excited to bring that forward, but we do have to do some design work on that. We have the reclaimed irrigation for parks, $2 million for the CIP, as I mentioned before, $500,000 for this coming year. Lehman Pump Station Expansion, $1.5 million in '25, 11 over the five-year period. All of our water facilities, fence replacement and upgrades, we've included $3.2 million in the CIP. A lot of our facilities have poor fencing. It hasn't been touched in many, many years, and we want to upgrade all of that, all these facilities to be first-class infrastructure facilities with a masonry wall structure around each one. So this is funding to do that. The water utilities, land acquisition, we have $5 million for '25 and $30 million in the five-year CIP. So this would be to buy the land and then to construct some type of facility for all of the staff that we expect to be out in these operations. We will be coming forward to you with some portable buildings in the next few meetings to talk about purchasing some portable buildings that we can have to house our staff as 30 staff members come on. Where are they going to go? How are they going to operate? This is a stop-get measure until we can acquire this land and then ultimately build out this new facility. And then the supervisory control and data acquisition system, SCADA system, we've included $500,000 for this coming year and a million in the CIP. I believe Mike is going to be bringing that on the 6, August 6 or 20th. August 20th for council award of a contract to implement that system. It's a very important system to make sure our system works, all the pumps go on when they're supposed to, the water's transferred between the tanks. So this, we'll be upgrading that as well. So as I mentioned to you before, we have the cost of service and rate study that's underway. The council approved a contract with Raftillis back in February to do that service study. And one of the things they look at is, well, what's the right level of revenue that you need to have to support operations? What's the overall level of revenue? But then the more complex question is, who pays for what portion of that cost? And within all of your different rates and your meter types and the classes of customers, so industrial or multifamily or residential or all those different pieces, who pays for what portion of that cost? So they've been looking at that structure on August 6. We're going to be coming forward to you and talking about that in detail to give you our proposal. The teaser on this is that commercial rates have been subsidized by residential customers. So we're going to be recommending an adjustment to that. So residential rates will, all rates will be going up. We expect double-digit rate increases for all of our customers, but it will be lower than what we proposed for commercial accounts. And we'll have that for you on the 6. Okay. Streets, drainage, and transportation improvements. A lot of good stuff in here. Let's go through it. As you guys know, we have the voter-approved bond package from 2022. $294 million program. We expect $232 million in expenses over this five-year CIP. Marketplace Road is out for bid. We're very pleased about that. Marketplace Road is out for bid. We're very pleased about that. We expect to get that in the next two or three weeks. We would have those bids back. We'll be evaluating those. We want to start construction by October and complete that road by April of next year. This will be one of our easier projects because it's all green filled. We don't have a lot of disruption with traffic. But we're expecting that to be open. So that's really exciting to see that first project materialize. We do expect Kohler's Crossing, Windy Hill and Stagecoach also to begin construction in twenty-five. All big projects. We've had to break these up into some smaller components, as you guys have seen in the last few months, to to move these forward. There's a lot of complexities there, but those pieces will also be moving forward. You also have the three roundabouts on Kohler's. Those are all under design. This is out of the Turs, number two, Benner, Sanders and Cromwell. Fifteen million dollars is included for construction of those roundabouts all next year. We also have intersection improvements in twenty-five as well, and there's a lot of these. Marketplace and Kohler's. So as Marketplace is completed and that road dead ends into Kohler's, we are going to need to have some kind of improvement. You funded a study to look at what those improvements are. This is money to actually design the improvement and to then construct it. We're right now assuming that will be a roundabout. So seven and a half million is included for a roundabout at that location. The same thing at Kyle Crossing and Kohler's. We've all driven through there and had frustration of that that temporary signal. We do have a a different type of signal. It's going to, it's another temporary signal, but it will have a suspension wires across it. It gives us more ability to control those and gives us a little bit better redundancy that 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 particular system goes out from time to time. But this is the ultimate improvement. I was making that a roundabout as well. Another seven and a half million dollars included for that, one point five million to start the design, and then land acquisition for that. Sixteen twenty-six in Marketplace is also an intersection that we've been looking at. This is, if you know, the next to that is Marketplace and Kyle Center. That's the intersection right across from the Chipotle and the Kohl's where we put up the delineators. The Council agreed to put that up. We've put funding in here to do some design work for both those intersections and construction in the CIP of twelve and a half million dollars to make those improvements. You know, many discussions coming forward about what those improvements will be and how, what the options are. But those two intersections are very challenging. And then we're also looking at Stagecoach and Veterans. As as you may recall, there is a four-lane divided roadway from Stagecoach that will go into F one FM one fifty, the Veterans. But then as it transitions and goes to the, get my directions right, the north side of that, that will need to be extended on the north side and then tapered down. That was not originally scoped as part of the bond project. So we've included another six million dollars in the CIP to fund those improvements as well. We do have the Turs number four as well to fund Go Fourth Road. You guys had just had the public hearing on that and more action items to come over the next couple of months. But the plan is to fund Go Fourth Road all the way from Yarrington all the way to BB Road with this new expansion of Turs number four. That's about a seventy-five million dollar project as we're estimating. But that'll be a very significant project, obviously, to improve that area. And then in addition to that, we're recommending a transportation master plan to update that plan. We've had one that was done a few years ago, but we believe it's important with all the growth and all the changes that we're putting in, the county projects that are going on, to update that. And as you've saw just a meeting or two ago, we've also included a million dollars in 2025 for our roundabout design and beautification of corridors and branding of those roundabouts. So as we build the roundabouts, the pavement's nice and just getting around them is great. But we want them to have a distinctive feel and look that brands the city very appropriately and make sure that we do that in a responsible way. So we've hired a consultant, Coleman and Associates, to do that, and we'll be including some funding to make those roundabout improvements.
I have a question about the Kyle and Cross, Kohler's and Kyle Crossing temporary light that you're saying that is coming. Will the times be adjustable? Because I think that's the one complaint, the one thing that most people say that could be improved will be the timing of the lights.
Yes, we'll have more flexibility to do that. Leon, did you have any other comments you wanted to add to that? You may have to come up here.
I'm just focusing concerns from.
Good morning, Council. Leon Barber, City Engineer. Councilmember, we just got the bids in for that intersection improvement. Not only are we including the cables and the poles that are going to go in there, we're going to also have some pedestrian improvements. That's what's added cost of the project. I believe we're trying to bring that item to you at the next council meeting so that you all can approve that project.
The question was, does it improve the timing? Will you have more functionality, though?
Of the, yeah.
We'll have a better ability to use that with the signals and the components that we're going to be putting in there. So if the traffic, if the intersection's overloaded with a lot of traffic, it'll, it can only handle so much. But we have better availability to make the improvements as we need to or to adjust them as we need to.
Because the one thing that I, even I do it, like, instead of taking my time to turn, I'm going to go straight and go across the parking lot for, from Costco. And I know a ton of people are doing the same thing, and I don't know, you know, how detrimental that's going to be at the end.
I've done it.
Okay.
That may still happen.
People do it. So I think the timing is the one thing that most people have complained about.
Exactly. That's correct. And.
Well, I was just going to say, one of the other things that we're doing is looking at that entire corridor. So the Kyle Crossing to Marketplace corridor is what type of improvements need to be made there. In addition to the the Public Safety Center, as you turn out, there's not a way to to turn left at that particular area. So we may have extending out, there's a a lane that you get into to take a left from Kohler's on going north on Kyle Crossing. That may have to be a little bit longer extension and to put all that together in a plan that makes a lot of sense. We we got a question at the Chamber event the other day about also about some truck traffic that's coming into some of those areas. So all that needs to be addressed as part of that.
I expect to see that report sometime at the end of October, the preliminary report, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question real quick, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, I already know I'm probably going to hear it, but most of this is going to be pretty much like we're the west side on this end. So if we're going to start construction in this area starting next year, we need to, number one, be ahead of the game and start notifying residents within the year that there's going to be a lot of construction going on. We got a lot of headache right now with traffic. There's going to be a lot of construction coming on, especially that part of town. So you need to start preparing yourself for that. And also making sure that we start designing a plan ahead of time of any detours that we need to take.
Yes, sir.
Especially in that area. I know that, you know, Bunton and BB are not listed here because I'm assuming that that's going to be on the twenty-six model. And so just for those that are watching right now, wondering why we don't have any design or or road construction for Bunton, because I know we're talking about sidewalks and all that. We'll get to that later. But I just want to make a point there that if we're going to start construction on this, Brian, especially in this area, it's going to be very, very congested within a matter of a good five to ten mile radius. So I think we should try to get ahead of the game.
Yes, sir.
On trying to find detours, because sixteen twenty-six does connect Kohler's, does connect to the Kohl's and all that.
I think it's a great point. And just in terms of timing, we expect the Kohler's roundabouts, the Benner, Sanders, Cromwell ones to be under construction first. The other areas would be under design, and then once those are completed, we transition to the other ones. But the point's well taken about communication. We want to make sure that we're really over-communicating on all these issues. A lot of particular, and this is just the ones we talked about. You've got all of the other road bond packages as well, which some of those on on the east side are, you know, the ones, those are already funded. I just, these are other ones that are beyond the road pod projects.
And that's something to keep in mind is that pretty soon the entire city of Kyle will be under construction.
Yes, sir.
So it's going to take a lot of patience. Look, moving forward, we're going to have a lot of construction all over Kyle. It's going to be a headache for a couple of years, well, more than a couple of years. But once these roads are built and the connectivity is there, you're going to see traffic flowing a lot better with the designs. But it's, you know, leading up to that, that we're going to get a lot of, a lot of emails on traffic because of construction. But it's, it's something that, you know, we've dealt with in the city quite a few times. Each time our roadways, I remember Burleson being a really big, you know, talking point. And once it got done, you you see the, how it's alleviated traffic into our city. So it's, it's all going to be for the good. It's going to be a headache getting there.
Yes, sir. And this, again, this is one of the reasons, you know, for the Transportation Director position. There's just a lot here, and it's it's more than any, Leon's done a good job of juggling a hundred different things. But this is just more than any one person can do. So we've got to have the right team to put all this together. And on the engagement side, we're definitely going to be stepping that up and making sure we're communicating very effectively to the residents directly. And then one of the things I've also seen, too, is making sure information goes to the various mapping systems that are out there like Waze or Google to make sure we're sending construction updates to those particular services. And then when you're trying to navigate around town, hopefully, your your car or your phone can help you get to the right place a little easier. Lot to do.
Well, I just would, I would say to what Tobias and Rizzo are saying, essentially, it's, you know, kind of interesting to think about. We have like a year essentially of time before we're going to really start having to detour any routes or any existing roads. And so, you know, one of the things for us that we could do is really try to come up with a very good plan with regards, like, it's almost like take, take that part of it out and, you know, focus on the the routing of the vehicles and the communication.
Getting ready for it.
And 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 how how good can we be? Because we know for a fact that the rub on all this construction will be feedback on lack of communication or just process, problems in the process where all of a sudden we blocked a road we didn't mean to block, and you got six or seven council members blowing you up, trying to fix it and those kind of things. If we could be the most proactive, you know, that we've ever been with regards, because we've never tried to have so much construction.
Right.
How can we set the, how can we be, you know, the leaders in the region? We're trying to be leaders in the construction in terms of putting this infrastructure. Let's be leaders in terms of the process we go through to reroute folks and communicate with them.
I love it. We'll be glad to come up with a plan and bring that back to you. I think that's, that's excellent feedback.
We got a year to prep.
Yes, sir. It's great. We know it's coming. So let's, let's do it the right way. That's great.
And something, you know, more systematic that that way everybody knows what to expect. It helps so much.
So to that point, I know at some point we talked about maybe having a separate site where we would have. I think it would be great to have ahead of time, even a year in advance, a schedule of what are the roads that we're going to be working on and what are going to be the possible detours that people can take.
Okay.
You know.
Like a separate webpage or something?
Yes, for them to know, okay, these are the roads that we're going to be having construction. I think that will mitigate a lot of the issues that we have with like, lack of communication when this happens.
Excellent. It's great feedback.
With that week, though, that bi-quarterly.
Newsletter?
That came out, I got mine in the mail on Wednesday. Something of adding of that and putting it on the front page of, like, this right here should be the first thing that people should read is to see what is coming, and these are the streets and these are the roads in the budget. And then that way, it gives them already a red flag, hey, in the next coming year, this is what to start expecting. And then every quarter, we can go in and say, this is the progress we're at and so forth.
I think that'd be great.
Who are we working with? Are we working with Tech dot or working with the county, you know? One of the feedback that I got during my conversation with Council was that a lot of the people that attended, they don't have social media. They don't have Facebook or stuff like that to where we could see the road closures and things. And and a mailer or something like that of a physical form or something that could make, basically, they could read off of. Again, the kiosk was brought up again, something of that nature is to add them in different areas the city could look at investing in in key points of the city. Those could be something to where when people are walking or doing pedestrian traffic or driving by, because they do see the billboards on the highway, but it's like a quick two seconds and boom, you're out. But just that that communication, because again, this is going to be major for our city in the next four to five years is construction on the road, like what Mayor and Rizzo are saying. If we get ahead of the game now, we can inform the residents from your 2022 bond, this is what's coming through, and this is the, some from some of the CIP projects. Because that was the biggest, biggest feedback that I got during that was communication from the city.
I point well taken. I think that's excellent feedback, Council, and we'll, we'll put together an excellent plan for you on that. One of the things that I thought was interesting earlier this week, we, some of us got to go to the Chamber event. The mayor spoke about some of our transportation initiatives, and we also had Commissioner Cohen and a Tech dot representative. And there's a lot of stuff happening in this area. So it was really interesting to see all those things together were happening. And I think for us to put together a communication plan that tells residents all of that at one time would be great because there may be a county project that's not ours. We don't want to leave that out of the communication because that's impacting a resident's life that we want to make sure that we're communicating. So cooperating with them, making sure our communication matches up, and we have a good source. Well, that's great feedback. We'll come back with a solution for that. All right, a couple of other things to mention to you on transportation. We did put a few other projects in here that I just want to highlight in Plum Creek, a traffic calming platform. I think it's just a little bit of a raised area in on Sanders. And Plum Creek has two hundred thousand has been proposed for that particular area. The other intersections off of Herzog and Green have those, but for some reasons, the Sanders one was not installed. So we're going to take care of that. The Post Oak subdivision also, you can see on the right has, this is out of our pavement condition analysis. All of the greens good and the other colors are not so good. Red's really bad. We're going to be improving these and reconstructing some of these roadways in this particular area. And you can also see on the one fifty-eight acceleration and deceleration lane improvements, we've included six hundred thousand. If you've ever tried to come on to the service road from that particular location, it's a little scary at times. And so we're going to put some deceleration acceleration lanes to make that better. All right, we did do the pavement study and back in earlier this year. Pavement Condition Index of eighty-two point five, it's zero to a hundred. A hundred is perfect, zero is dirt and or something worse than dirt. And that may be, that's my technical explanation, Leon, but we're at eighty-two point five. That's a, it's a lot of slides. I'm going to slip here and there. But eighty-two and a half is our our score where we are. We want to maintain that. We've calculated, what do you need to be putting into street maintenance to maintain that rating for the city? Right now, we have one point five million in funding. This budget proposes to increase our funding to two point eight eight million for streets. And we'll go through in just a moment some of those various areas. So another one point, almost one point four million dollars in funding for streets. We also have.
So is that, that's the original micro-surfacing budget line item?
Right, and we increased that.
So it started at five hundred? That's what we did every year for a while, but that's the item that you're expanding?
Yes, sir.
So is it just micro-surfacing or?
Well, you'll see it. It's, I'll go through all of these particular ones. So chip seal and some of these other things are included, too. But micro-surfacing is a big component of it. And it's, it's grown tremendously over the last few years. The Council has made more investments, and we're almost to three million dollars a year now.
The majority of that, well, okay, so the five hundred thousand was really just for a subcontract to Viking, I think was the name of the.
I don't know the, I don't know the company.
Whoever they were. So but you're, but so from five hundred to two point eight, is the majority of that just contracts for different firms or how much of that is our in-house? Because we've been developing our ability to do a lot of that in-house.
Yeah, we we have all, we are not adding any crews for this work, so anything that we can't do will be contracted out. A lot of it will be contract work.
Okay.
And I'll show, in just a moment, I'll go through and you'll be able to see all the projects that add up to the two point eight eight million.
Is it, so is what you're saying that essentially, in terms of our streets maintenance and streets construction crews, which have similar tasks, they're going to be on separate projects that just aren't, this is just a different piece, essentially?
Yes, sir. So for example, Hayden Reich, they were reconstructing Hayden Reich. That was a project that took several weeks.
Well, that's the streets' construction, but what about the streets' maintenance?
Chris, do you want to try to address some of those questions? Let me ask. I'm going to call, I'm going to phone a friend here.
Just trying to get a bit of a sense of like, what are, what are we doing in terms of just the?
Good question.
And then what are we contracting? What's the total budget? Because they're the same buckets, essentially.
Right. So currently, now we have one million in the budget for our street construction crews and five hundred thousand for the microseal projects. We're recommending upping that to two point eight eight million. The million dollars will be for micro-surfacing. The one point eight eight million will be for the street construction projects. Majority of those we'll be able to do in-house. The ones that we can't do in-house, we'll have to contract out.
All right. So one point eight eight is for, basically for raw materials for your streets' construction and streets' maintenance crews.
Yes, sir.
To to go about your business.
Yes, sir.
All right. I like that. I like that even better than just one big, big two point eight eight million dollar contract. So, okay, that's, that's what I needed. Thank you.
What we're trying to do through the years, Mayor, was we want to develop your, your in-house construction to where we could limit the contracting because we want to be able to do it in-house as much as possible. So I see what you're trying to get at. We don't want to have it, like you said, two million dollar contract for one company versus we were trying to develop a city of Kyle. versus we were trying to develop a city of Kyle, uh, public work system to where we can be able to do it all in-house and fund it ourselves and then just be able to maintain it.
Right. And we've been working over the last few years to upgrade of our equipment. We've added new pieces of equipment to our, uh, construction crews where that enables them to have the ability to go out and do those projects on their own. We could do a majority of it in-house.
And since we're on that subject, uh, I was going to wait till we got further in the budget, but how, how are we doing with retention with training staff? As we're training staff, how are we doing with the retention of that staff?
Our retention of staff is very impressive, actually. I mean, I think we're down, uh, we're fully staffed. We were fully staffed for about two months and unfortunately we lost a few staff to another city. So I think right now we only have two vacancies in our construction, our maintenance and our drainage crews. So, uh, we're pushing about 56 employees total in those divisions.
Yeah. Cause I know, I know when we first started the, uh, the, the construction, the in-house construction for roads, uh, we were having trouble with retention, but it's great to hear that we're not having that issue, you know, as, as much anymore. Two, two employees is nothing compared to what we were seeing early on. So, uh, I guess we're, we're doing better, uh, you know, also, you know, to, uh, compensate those that are getting the specialized training.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, we bring in new people all the time. We encourage entry level positions, bring those people in, train them how to do the work and we're able to retain those because of the culture that we have in the city, you know.
Thank you, Chris.
I remember we only had 10.
So to his question, you're mentioning that we lost two employees to a different city. Was it like higher positions or higher pay?
Uh, no, I think there was other, uh, reasons why they left. I don't think it was because of the pay or the work. I think there were some other issues that they were dealing with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Keep the rest of the staff awake back there when we call on them. So that's good. All right. Um, sidewalk and ma- vibe master plan. It is spelled correctly with a Y. $200,000 annually for sidewalk, uh, program. We also have another 266 for CDBG funds for sidewalks. And we've included 650,000 for a vibe trail in 2025 and then a million dollars each year for the CIP moving forward. I mentioned to you the transportation director position. That's a full all-in cost for that position, uh, with everything that's needed. But as we've talked about, we just have a lot of, a lot of work that needs to be overseen. So, uh, these are some of the projects that make up, uh, the, the 2.88 million. So you can see the full depth repair of some of the roads, creekside, east, uh, post road and the lanes, uh, lane miles that we have. Chip seal, uh, not very expensive, but about 2.9, uh, miles of that for about $15,000. Then the two-inch mill and overlays, there are a lot of these particular projects, uh, that we have through the city, uh, that, that you'll see. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those with Chris or Mike can answer those. But I'm going to just kind of let you just peer at those for just a moment. Some of these are very small projects, but we wanted to put them out there for you so you could see them.
I like that some of these projects are, you know, uh, some of our older neighborhoods, sometimes they feel like they're being forgotten. To see them on this list is really encouraging.
Yes, sir. And I, again, I think that's the benefit of having that pavement condition analysis is we have a objective, uh, report. This says what the areas are that we need to address rather than us trying to drive around and just figure it out. Um, it's, it's a report that drives where that work needs to go.
Well, I'll tell you just a brief story on, uh, on that. Uh, former assistant city manager, James Erp was one of the first thing, I asked him like, you know, what, what are your biggest fears with regards to the future of the city? Like what big liabilities are out there? And his, his number one answer was that all of the streets and a lot of subdivisions were constructed at the same time. And then obviously they're constructed by the developer and then deeded over to the city. And then that, which means that they're all likely to hit their end, end of life, uh, at the same time. So there's this big, you know, liability there. Uh, but I think, you know, since then we've done a good job of strong towns model, comprehensive planning, the pavement condition index scoring, and then this particular item or the, the, the budget we just talked about with micro-surfacing and going through and systematically keeping that up really does limit that long-term liability a lot. So I'm glad for it.
I believe we're, we are making progress. I'm glad. It's interesting to hear, you know, some of you have been here much longer than I have of how this operation has grown.
Neighborhoods, a lot of times there's a big surge of growth and a lot of them get built at exactly the same time.
Yep. So about 1.1 million, the two-inch mill and overlay that we have all these various, uh, roadways. Um, and then this is the slide where you can see the, the depth repair, chip cell, the overlay and the micro, uh, resurfacing or micro-surfacing is about 1.1 million. So 2.88, 34 mile lane miles of, of roads, a lot of road. Okay. Um, drainage improvements are also something that we funded as well in this five-year CIP, 13.2 million, um, including about 2.8 for this year. Some of the projects are listed here, scotch and sledge, uh, 300,000 this year, uh, 25 and 2.7 over the, the five-year planning. And then we have, um, a variety of other projects that you can see here. Some of these are in design and, um, the different work that's being done. The drainage fee study, as I mentioned to you, that funds a lot of these projects. That project hasn't, the, the, the calculation hasn't been updated in several years. So we're proposing to come back and see what is the cost that, uh, is being borne by the drainage fee and what should that fee be? And then we'll be able to decide, decide if you want to update or not, just like the street impact fees and other, uh, projects that we've brought forward to you. Okay. Keep rolling. Uh, enhanced public safety. Some additional information, uh, council member Parsley that you'd asked about. So we did have the police staffing study, um, all the key points that we had in that, we've been incorporating that into this budget. We've had a comprehensive overview of all the calls, the response levels, um, and we've developed a series of recommendations. There were about, uh, 18 or 19 positions that were recommended in that study. The chief also had a few elements that he was recommending in his budget. Uh, we could not fund all of those this year and, and frankly, we probably couldn't hire all of those positions in one given year anyway. So we are looking at breaking that up into a two-year plan. So for this particular year, we're recommending 12 positions for the police department and 25. Here is a list of those positions in operations and in support services. Uh, you can see collectively that's about, uh, almost 1.2 million dollars in cost. Corporals, uh, two corporals, a police safety specialist, a real-time crime center analyst, two of those positions. It's one of those, uh, 21st century developments to be able to look at crime, uh, more dynamically with, uh, information that's coming in from the community. An analyst for CID and evidence technician, and then we have a variety of others, uh, on support, including, uh, one of the mental health civilian responder positions that, that chief mentioned to you. We also look at our personnel, uh, in comparison to other cities on, um, how many officers per thousand residents. This is also an imperfect way to do this because each community is different. You know, geography is different, the community demographics are different. But you can see we're, we're pretty much smack dab in the middle, uh, in terms of our staffing. So we think we're in a very good position for, um, uh, responses with our officers and we have a good, uh, level of staffing. We're really pleased to be able to, uh, provide the services to the community.
So are these numbers after we hired the 19 positions that we currently have open? Or will it be, is it a current number, the 1.37 per thousand residents?
That's with all of our authorized positions and, and we have just a few vacancies. We don't have, uh, we have 12 positions we're proposing for this coming year, but we're, chief, do you recall how many vacancies we have in the department?
Well, we currently have non-toll vacancies and two dispatch vacancies right now.
Okay.
And these numbers are reflective of our authorized numbers, not field or unfielded authorized numbers.
I, I mean, I, I'm, I, I know that the people that did the study, they know what they're doing. I don't like, I don't know that the middle was the right place to be. I would like to be able to. Cause as I remember when I was reviewing the, um, comprehensive plan, what was proposed then was to have at least two per thousand, correct?
Two per thousand is a standard that's kind of used across the country, but as city manager mentioned, you know, each city is unique and it's, it's needs for the community. And, uh, but that is a, a standard that cities would strive for. Austin particularly has a 2.5. Like other cities are 1. something and that tends to match their rates.
Yeah. It, it, it's a good benchmark. This is not a, you, you wouldn't want to staff the department just on this metric alone. I, it's a, it's a good, just rough measure of whether or not we have the right staffing or not. But there's a whole other series of questions that have to be asked about what type of calls do you have? How many? Uh, what's your geography? Um, what type, what percentage of your calls are violent crime versus other types of things? And so that's what the staffing study has done and that's why they recommended not to go all the way up to two officers per 1,000. In fact, nobody else in this competitive landscape does that either.
Okay.
But we do have some vacancies. Uh, it comes and goes. I do believe with the salary changes that we've made, we're in a very strong position to continue to recruit great officers. We've, we have a lot of new officers coming in and the chief's done a great job with his recruitment team to bring in new officers. We think we're, we're on the right path.
Okay. If I could have just a small follow-up question on that.
Chief, you might want to come up to the, the mic so everyone else can hear you as well.
Chief, how much of that, that 1.37 officers we have, one, how much of that do we see that's on overtime? To where we're, we're short on staff as far as the shifts go, um, the ratio on that, does that affect that as well?
So it could if we, obviously if we had more officers that were on board, uh, and we then met our minimum staffing thresholds. You know, that might reduce overtime. Uh, one thing city manager mentioned too is the difficulty in hiring officers and we're certainly looking at things with salary and, and other things of compensation throughout the city, which have been really good for recruiting, by the way. Uh, but we're competing with every other law enforcement agency in the state of Texas right now aggressively to recruit for law enforcement. And, uh, but back to the numbers, certainly the more full-time staff that you add, if our numbers increase over the next several years.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it, it could have an impact on the overtime reduction because we're meeting our minimums with existing staff rather than overtime. Uh, court and illnesses and, and lengthy absences, we have several. Matter of fact, you may have noticed that we're getting recognized for our efforts in recruiting military personnel. Uh, we're getting recognized in Austin soon, but along with that comes some challenges because some of those military personnel are still connected to their military assignment. Uh, we recently had one that was recalled to duty for a full 12-month period and now he's back. So we may have some staff members that are on board that are out for good lawful, good reason. And sometimes we have to cover their shifts for an extended period of time. Uh, but the answer to your question is yes, if we were to add more officers, it could have a reduction in overtime. But again, we're in that very competitive market and I'm not sure that we could fill many more positions that are currently requested in the budget anyway in the, in the market.
So we just got to kind of look at the difference between the chart itself, the statistics, uh, Ms. Parsley, versus real time, what goes on a daily basis. Cause you know, you're right, we, we hire people, people go FIMLA, people go out, they're sick, vacation or retirement. And so that number fluctuates. So just kind of want to see where we're at. Cause I know we're trying to do our best to, to work on the overtime because we don't want to overwork the officers as well.
Absolutely, sir. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the biggest number to keep in mind is, uh, their, what do you call it? Rate to answer a call. I mean, how quickly can we answer a call? Call is probably one of the biggest numbers to really look at instead of this, this number here. It's what, what is the response time? And that's something that they, the, the study really looked at was the response time and we've got a really good response time. If that number changes, that's the one that we really would be the red flag on, anything that would trigger stuff. So, uh, I think the study was really good. So.
All right. Uh, we have a number of other enhancements that we're making in public safety for equipment and technology. $155,000 per year for nine vehicles and some leases. Radio equipment for patrol, um, the opticon traffic signal preemption. If you're familiar with how that works is if a, a police officer is trying to respond to a priority call, they have the ability to, uh, change that light to green. So it's safer for the officer and the public to go through it. They're also adding a drone program for patrol, safety signs and barricades, the fusis software. This is part of that real-time crime center. If you've ever seen that in the EOC, it's very impressive, uh, information to see. And then we have a variety of other software support items for another 134,000. So as I mentioned to you, uh, enhancing public safety, putting the right investments there has been a big focus of this budget. We've got a lot of elements.
One of the things I did want to ask on this is a conversation we used to have had before chief was, uh, uh, the upgrade of the, uh, computers in the patrol cars. I know that we had talked about having a computer that would be able to reboot itself without having, out having the car running 24/7. Have we looked at the technology or are we still exploring it?
Um, so it's something that we constantly evaluate on the ability of the car to maintain enough battery power to keep the computers up and running. And so we've tried a series of different types of cars. Obviously they have the hybrid models, uh, of the Ford. Some have worked out, some have not, but our computers are designed to shut down as much as possible, uh, you know, when not in operation. But the officers just generally have to keep their vehicles running just to keep all that stuff up and running. It's not only about that, but it's keeping the vehicle cool, especially in the, the hotter summer because the computers can overheat when you turn the car off as well. So. Yeah, we tried, we tried some of those hybrid models. They didn't really work out that well. The vehicles weren't performing well. But we do try to constantly evaluate every option for both the computer and the vehicle.
And, and I'm, this, this question is important because I've had some residents reach out to me and say, we see, you know, vehicles running, but, uh, you know, it's, it's about the equipment that's in there, making sure they're thinking it's a comfort thing, but it's, you know, in a way it is because of the vest, right? But really it's, uh, the computers that we're making sure that we are preserving because you overheat a computer, that's a big cost.
Right. And then they're not operational when the officers get dispatched to a car, even though they're out of the vehicle and they, they run back to the vehicle for that emergency call. Their computers aren't operational and provides them all of the information they need to be en route to the call. It maps them to the right location and provides them very useful data to both be safe and then serve the public. Yes.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
All right. I think this is my last section. Then I'm going to turn it over to Pravez for the exciting stuff in just a moment. So park development improvements. I'm warming them up for you, Pravez. Uh, so we have a number of improvements that we're proposing in this budget for parks. As you know, we have the strategic plan and the parks master plan, uh, update that's underway. But we have a lot of goals that we're looking at with the park system. We want to be a high-performing, award-winning park system on unparalleled beautification standards, high-quality trails and connectivity. Uh, we do have our new parks director here. I believe he is in the back, David Lopez. Uh, we're, we're going to be recognizing him at the next, uh, agenda just to introduce you. But David's going to be a huge component of delivering this park system and making this happen for us. So in the budget for this coming year, uh, we do have, uh, two new, uh, positions that we're adding, a recreational specialist and a management assistant. Um, I've also included $250,000 for, uh, the new director to assign as he needs to with, uh, staff. There were a number of different positions that were requested by the team. And I just wasn't quite sure if those were the right positions or in the right spots in the organization. I wanted to have the new director evaluate that and determine whether those, uh, are the right areas. So we did include funding so he can implement his new program, uh, but I don't have specific positions to sign to that 250,000.
Okay. I, I was wondering when I went through all the staff that we were hiring, I was thinking about, you know, some of the, um, improvements that council would like to see in the citizens as well. And one of it was, you know, taking care of the, uh, turf, the fields, everything else. So I was wondering if we're going to get a horticultur specialist, an irrigation specialist, or even an arborist on, on team, you know, just to make sure that we're maintaining the level that council expects. And that's kind of what I'm asking right now is, are we, are, cause I didn't see it in the personnel we're hiring.
Dave, David has a background in, in both of those areas, uh, which will be a really big addition to the staff. We may want to add a position like that in the future, but what I'm wanting to make sure of is the positions that we have, that we're getting the most out of those and we're using those in the most effective way. I think we'll know that after the next few months as David goes through his evaluation of the department to see what kinds of assets that he needs. But I don't want to be adding positions if perhaps they're not needed. And, uh, that's something that, uh, I wanted to give him some flexibility. So when he has a few months under his belt, one of the things I'd like to do is come back to the, the council and update you on what those recommendations would be and where those assets would be deployed and how we're using our staff to make sure we raise the level of performance of the department and the expectations of the council that, and the community that we meet or exceed all of those. And that's, that's the goal. We want to be the best. So we're going to have to have the right investments, but we need to have an assessment of the team and the types of things that they're doing and their capabilities.
And, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because, you know, we, as a council, I've, I've, I've seen the council always wanting the best. And I understand that for the residents wanting the best, but you know, uh, we haven't done enough to budget in to have that expert in there. I mean, we expected somebody we're paying to cut grass, that salary, to come out and be an expert for land management or anything like that. You know, so I want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're not putting too big of a burden on our staff members that are not qualified in that field. Making sure that they're doing the job they were hired to do, not having to go above and beyond and do something they're not qualified for.
Agreed.
You know, so that's kind of what I, I felt like in the past council was expecting of these people, right? I want to make sure that us as a council are making, we're putting our, uh, the budget behind what we're asking for.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, uh, I think what we want is our management team to, in the parks department to, um, to be the leaders for their crews, that the crews know what they're supposed to be doing based on their expert guidance and, uh, their direction on all these areas. And I think we've got the right team to do that. So we'll be coming back to you with some specific, uh, you know, improvements and enhancements. And one of those may be an arborist or a horticulturist. I, I just want to give David a little bit of time to look at that and understand what's needed. I was concerned about just adding positions that may or may not be the right positions in the right spots.
Yeah. Cause I, I think we, you know, our park crew for, for, forever has done a really good job for the limited budget they had. You know, I always think the budgets really what hindered what we were doing and what we wanted for. we wanted for parks. But, you know, making sure we're investing in that area is probably where I'm, I'm more concerned about.
Great. Well, we appreciate that. And if we need something, we're going to do it to the level of service that you're asking us to do, we're going to come back and ask you for it. And I know that the council is very supportive of that and we want to make sure that we have the best parks. So we're, we're going to come back and ask you if we don't have it.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you. So there's, there's a lot of other items on here. We do have some equipment, but again, most of this is that additional money as David goes through the department, he can make that recommendation to you. We also have a number of capital projects that are being planned. We're looking at parking lot design and construction. La Verde is underway, you already know that, the project is under construction, be ready early October is the plan for that one. We're also looking at Steeplechase, Waterleaf, Greg Clark, Greg Clark Park and Lake Isle as well, is getting those projects underway, designed, getting the design done and then actually constructing those improvements and the funding for that is in this budget. Landscaping, lawn irrigation, planning, all of these parks that you see here, we're going to be making improvements to all of those, Steeplechase, Waterleaf, Greg Clark, Bunton and Heroes Memorial. We do have some restrooms and that need to still be added at Heroes Memorial. So we're going to be coming back to you with a design that complements the overall design of that park, to have a restroom that we can, facility that we can be proud of there. And we have a number of other park projects that need to have some amenities looked at there, as well as fencing, shade structures, seating for a lot of our parks. They just haven't been updated in a long time, so we're going to go through a systematic process to inventory those and then upgrade those, as well as the, the actual playground equipment as well. Many of those have not been upgraded in many years. We're also adding lighting, security and internet functionality at some of the parks.
When you're looking at, what do you call it, the park, the Heroes Memorial Park, are we going with the same designer for, that built the park to do?
I don't know if we've, I don't know if we've selected a design firm for that. I don't believe we've.
We've already started, we're using Philip and his team to design the park and we added a component, we use them as well. The reason why is I'm, I'm just worried about getting a totally different design and changing the aesthetic of the park. I think using the same design firm would probably be key to bring something in there that matches what's already there.
Okay, you got it. We, we certainly want it to be great. We have not picked that design firm yet, but we can bring that forward to you and we'll have a contract that you'll need to approve to get that done. Unfortunately, restrooms are expensive and it will take a little bit of money to do that, but we think it's important. So here's a variety of the park projects that we presented, Jesse presented this to you a few weeks ago, but you can see some of the items that we have in for the current year. And then the next few years, we've listed out many of these different improvements. As I mentioned to you, parking lots is one of those foundational things that we're going to be doing, as well as a lot of just what we call amenity care, a lot of the items that are out there in the parks, we want to improve those. So you can see all these various elements here. We did develop a $25 million program over five years for reinvesting in our current parks. So that's separate and apart from the funding that we've been talking about for the sportsplex. This is just to reinvest in our existing parks that we have and it's not a new park, it's just replacing things that we have. So we've got a lot of funding in place to do this. We have the first couple of years identified of things that we think we need to be looking at, but then as David comes on as our new director, we really want his input and guidance on what would the other elements say we need to look at and how would he want to assign that. So much more to come on that in the future, we'll be coming back, but we do have funding in place to do those things.
So I'm sorry to interrupt. One thing that I would love to see if we can get done by next year will be to have that informational marquees or kiosks in each park. It brings up to the point that Tobias was mentioning before and the lack of communication to people that do not have internet or do not follow any of the social media pages, because I think that now that we're adding wifi or internet to our parks and electricity, I think, I think I would love to see that happening, you know, sooner rather than later.
No, we, we agree. In fact, earlier this week, David, Jesse, I had a conversation about just wayfinding in parks, when you walk in, what's the signage, where do you go for what, how do you find your way through that? That's already been identified by David as something we need to do, so we'll definitely be bringing that back to you.
So is there any way that can be brought back before we approve the budget to see if that could be included?
Well, I think you have funding to do that in this coming budget. We just need to have what is the plan for how we would do it? And there needs to be a whole host of signage that's improved, as well as perhaps some other kiosk and things like that that we could look at. But I think we've got the funding, we just need to have the plan be brought back to you.
And so if you guys bring up the plan, will we be able to execute it by 2024, 2025?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I have just, I have just three things on the parks real quick before we move on. Lake Isle parking lot?
Yes, yes, sir.
Do we know how, we're going to look at an estimate on how far it's going to go out and also the width, because I've been driving there every now and then and the parking lot is so, so small, right, David? Very, very tiny.
Well, we want, we want a hired design firm, a professional engineer to design the parking lot and, and the reason for that is all the widths and the turning radiuses and things like that. We also want all of them to have lighting, landscaping islands and potentially electric charging stations, maybe a few, just like we did for La Verde. So that is, that is the standard for every parking lot we're going to have, is when we touch it, it's going to be very nice and it's going to be meant to last time. So we'll be coming back to you with a contract so you can see all that, but it's going to be done the right way.
Because if you go to Lake Isle, you can see on the right-hand side, we have a lot of the, there are trucks that are parked there. So would there be a possible design to where you would have employee parking on one end to where you could have the big work trucks, the trailers? And then also to see how expanded it's out on that end for?
I think we can definitely look at that. I think ultimately the offices for parks are going to need to move out of that location. We just need more room. You're, you're going to hear that from us a lot of times in our operations. So ultimately, we don't want to have heavy equipment and lots of work trucks out there. So we'll look at that whole design.
Because I know that, that the residents are competing for those spaces when, when, especially early in the morning, whenever they're doing, they're doing the, picking up the grass or the mowing and then they have the cars there.
Not enough room.
And then number two, could we look at Vista Park in the future to see where we're at as far as what we could do to develop that, whether even it's not putting a structure there, but to put some kind of playground equipment, something like that of an exercise track? I mean, it is open land, I mean, it is a park that we own.
Yes, sir.
So just kind of looking at that in the next future.
I agree. I think we can, all of those things can be looked at in the parks master plan when we bring that forward to you, open land like that, yes, ma'am.
And then the last thing on the Heroes Restrooms, like Robert's saying, I think at one time we were talking, there was a talk about an actual facility being, being, being built there, like a restaurant or something like that to cater to the, the park itself. I was always going to assume that that's where restroom facilities would be at, but I haven't seen anything come forward on that yet.
So the, the site just to the north of Heroes Memorial is the restaurant site. We really, what I'd prefer to keep that site pure for the restaurant activities and then have a separate location near the park for restrooms. But again, we'll bring you a design firm and then go through those design options and see where it works best. But we certainly want people from the restaurant to be interactive with the park. I know that's part of the design the council had looked at when they built that facility, which is just fabulous over there. We just want to, we want to make sure it's done the right way. It's such a fabulous facility. It needs to be done in concert with the other future development plans.
Great, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One that ties a little bit into Councilmember Tobias's question about Vista. We have several parks that are not fully developed yet, that I don't see in the budget. One of those is Cool Springs, which has the trails around the lakes there, beautiful little park, no development going on there, which I don't have a big problem with, but I would really like for the trails to be well-maintained around there, especially with the overgrowth, because it is an excellent little park. And we have some others, properties. Are they in the budget anywhere?
We don't have anything specifically for Cool Springs. We do have the, the parks master plan and I think one of the challenges that we've had is it's, it's, there's so many assets and so many things that we're trying to do, but there's not a plan for what we're doing, when. And we really want to have a highly-developed plan, it's gotten a lot of good input from the council and the community of the types of things that you want to see in these parks. And then we're going to put together a list and then we're going to get them done. And we're going to have a specific program of how we're going to knock them out. Certainly like cleaning up the area, making sure the overgrowth, we can certainly take care of that. But in terms of other hard improvements, we don't have those planned. We can certainly take a look and see, you know, maybe a trail or something like that, what that might look like. But I'd really like that to come forward to you as part of the master planning process because if I do that one, then something else doesn't get done. And I want to make sure we have a good handle of what's first on the list and what's 500 on the list, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And to my last point, when I was talking about the marquees, I was talking about digital. Because I know that there are some, currently some informational kiosks in certain parks, but I'm talking about digital, so we can be updating information as it's happening without having to have actually staff members going there and change a flyer every time we're updating something. It will be ideal for people to even have it, that you can interact with it to look for, yes, to look for information.
We could certainly look at that. That's been done in many other parks and I know David's had experience with that. And maybe a central place where you walk in, you've got a way to interact, but then other wayfinding as you get back in the park. All right, I'm going to run from these slides.
I want to add one too, actually. So another, another area to make sure we're considering in the parks master plan is the acreage behind the Target. We, in the CSW JLL deal, the, there's a strip of land directly behind Kohl's and Target that's not small and there's a lot of opportunity there. It's flat and level for playground-type infrastructure, park, you know, nature. And we know that the block around City Last Drive is going to develop as well. So I think we need to at least start putting some thought into what that project could be. And then when they're getting ready to go, we would have something to show the developers as well.
Yeah, great, great point, Mayor. It's one that I haven't thought about, but I, I do think we'll put that in the master plan, come up with some ideas what we can do. Yes, sir.
So on the master plan, we're, same question as the water plan. When do you think we're going to start? You may have already said this, but you know, when are we going to?
I haven't mentioned that specifically. It's, we think mid-year, next year, we'll have that. We're hopefully going to be taking a sportsplex item, you know, in November and then start that master planning process so that the sportsplex and all the park system can be put together. But by mid-year, April to June timeframe, we think we could have a master plan ready to go.
So one of the things I'd like to look at is funding as well for new parks. I know we're not there yet, but I want to make sure, I had $500,000 in a, a couple of years ago, set up for a park in an underserved area. I'd like to get that 100 back and add another 500 to it if possible for areas that are underserved in our community. So I definitely would love to find a way to come up with that dollar amount.
Well, I believe you do have the capacity in the budget that's proposed, is against 25 million over five years, so five years, 5 million per year to invest in parks. And then as we come forward, we could allocate that differently. So the first couple of years, we've got several things we want to do. Some of these are just foundational things of parking lots. Frankly, we have a lot of Caliche parking lots and so we're going to try to really improve those and get that done. But then you have a lot of funding in the, the out-years of the CIP to do a number of different improvements and we'll, you'll have options to do that, sir.
No, because currently I'm, I'm working with State Representative and the county on some funding from Texas Parks and Wildlife and other areas for parks for underserved communities. So if we could get those funds, it'd be great to just show that we are invested, invested interest in there as well.
Okay, we could, we could certainly take a look at that. Yes, sir.
And that'll be submitted either by the city or the county.
For the grant.
For the grant. So the deadline's coming up, August 16th, so something that we're looking at.
We'll take note of that. Lots of improvements here. Any, any other questions on those items? Again, those are just the highlights. Now we have the fund financials and Mayor, if you want to take a break, this might be a good logical spot, or if you want to keep going, we'll certainly go through the rest. So we probably have about another 60 slides or so of the, the financials of each individual fund that we'll go through.
You all want to take a 10-minute break?
No.
All right, we'll, we'll start it up, 10 on the dot. Thank you. Call this meeting back to order. Pervez, you ready? I'd like to formally request a joke or a riddle, please.
Are you serious, Mayor? So Mayor, Mayor Portem, council members, for the record, I'm Pervez, Moise City's Director of Finance. And as always, I like to listen to council's request and since Mayor made this special request, at the last gathering, we did a riddle, if y'all remember about the, the train.
I got it wrong.
Yeah. So this morning, if you're really serious, Mayor, I will share a joke. It's a clean joke, so you don't have to worry about it. So I'm trying to think which one.
I, I prepped you for this.
Oh, okay. So there are three athletes, they, on a Saturday night, they're at a local bar and they're trying to outdo each other. Who is the best, who's the strongest, who's the fastest? So they go about for a while and around the bend of the, the bar, a wise man was sitting with his hat on, they didn't recognize him. He comes up to him. He goes, boys, I've been hearing y'all's stories for a while. Why don't we do a honest competition that will settle the score for once and for all? And that was Jimmy Johnson. They finally recognized when he took his cap off, hat off. So they said, yeah, we're up to it. Because what's, what's the competition? So the, the three athletes, there was a Longhorn, an Aggie, and a Baylor Bear.
Oh, my gosh.
So Jimmy Johnson goes, I'll keep it simple. Tomorrow morning, y'all wake up early, 7 o'clock, we'll meet at this ball field and you will have to make three rounds. And whoever does it the fastest is the winner. Y'all agree? And they all agreed. So then he goes, there's only one condition. You can only bring one thing with you and nothing else. And they all agreed, so they showed up the next morning. Jimmy Johnson was there to check him, check them in. Longhorn was the first one, being the smartest. So he dragged, he drags an ice chest full of soft drinks and, and, and water, bottled water. So Jimmy Johnson goes, okay, I told you one object, you brought an ice chest, I didn't tell you whether it should be full or empty. That's okay, we'll let you go. But why did you bring an ice chest? The Longhorn goes, well, you're going to make us go three rounds. When I do get thirsty, I'll grab a soft drink or a bottled water. Jimmy Johnson goes, okay, that's pretty good. Go ahead and clocks him in on the stopwatch. Next comes the Baylor Bear. He goes, what do you have to declare? So the Baylor Bear goes, well, I brought this wet towel. When it gets hot, I'm going to wipe myself, my ears, my forehead, my neck, it'll keep me cool. Jimmy Johnson goes, okay, go right ahead. So clocks him in and the timer's on. The third one shows up, that's the Aggie. He's got a car door hanging over his shoulders. So Jimmy Johnson is puzzled, he goes, what are you going to do with a car door? This is a competition about going around the track." He goes, "Sir, with all due respect, when it gets hot, I'm gonna roll down the window."
I am never asking you for a joke again.
And that's Aggie engineering right there.
Yes, sir. Okay, so let, let me, let me get my thought together here.
He's like, "Oh, you want a joke? I'll tell you a joke. I got one for ya."
Mayor, you're not an Aggie, are you? So when the city manager introduced this section that we're gonna talk about, financials, Jesse over there heard that he said "fun financials." So we'll make it fun and interesting. So before we get into the, the details of the budget, everything that the city manager spoke about, we will now cover those, how those resources are funded, where they're funded, and where it's shown in the budget document. But before we get there, I have a couple of housekeeping items. We have placed this beautiful 325-page city budget document in, in front of you. It has every detailed line item information you're interested in seeking is in this document. We have also posted this document on the city's webpage, so all our residents and taxpayers and our city employees can access this information. In addition, the city manager's presentation and my presentation that we're working on right now, it has also been posted on the city's webpage. So it's all available to our taxpayers and ratepayers. So with that, I'm gonna start, but before we get to the details of the budget, I wanted to give you all an overview of the city's budget system, how the city's budget system is set up, how the city's financial management system is set up, how we account for it, and how we report for it. So the slides following that will try to make, will make sense how, and, and is shown in our budget document. So this slide, you may recall from last year, this is the city's overall fund structure. The city has a total of 57 separate funds that we use. And like most city governments, our government organizations, they use what is known as the Fund Accounting System. Jesse, it's FUND with a D. So Fund Accounting System provides for accountability, it accounts for transparency, and because it is a public purpose and function-based revenue and expenditure accounting and reporting system, it gives clarity and accountability for our taxpayers and ratepayers. Similar to an organization chart, this chart shows the city's budget and financial management systems, how it is set up, how it's organized, and the financial transactions are accounted for, tracked, monitored, and reported. So like I said, the city has a total of 57 separate funds or books. In comparison, on the private sector, let's take American Airlines or Boeing. Even though their worldwide operations, their pyramid only has a single consolidated general ledger, one set of books for the entire operation. The city of Kyle, if you look at the top box, the total budget for all funds is 365 million, or 365.4 million. The next layer below that, you see three buckets, or three sections. The first section is governmental funds. The middle section is proprietary funds, and the last section is fiduciary funds. And let me just briefly explain to you what governmental fund is and why it's used as compared to the proprietary fund or fiduciary fund. The governmental funds, which is majority of our funds, 238.8 million dollars of that 350 million dollar budget, is all accounted for in the governmental-type funds. About 65% of our budget is within governmental-type funds. And governmental-type funds generally are used for tax-supported activities and functions of a city government. So general fund, road bonds, they're all accounted for under governmental funds. Proprietary funds, which is about 35% of our funding, 126.6 million dollars, these are the types of funds that are very unique in the sense that they're very similar to a commercial enterprise or a commercial business, private sector business. These funds account for, they budget and account and report as a commercial business. They are user fees-based activities and functions, such as our water utility, wastewater utility, and storm drainage. They're accounted for here because they're self-funded through user fees and through utility rates. About 35% are in this fund. And lastly, fiduciary fund, this is a, almost like a trust fund accounting that is used for OPEB, other post-employment benefits that we have, an O program that the city has continued, but we still have to account for until the last eligible employee moves on. So we have three different types of funds, right? Governmental funds, proprietary funds, and fiduciary. Each one of these has different set of rules and the way you account for and the way you report. Governmental accounting, our governmental funds, have their own set of rules. Proprietary funds have their own set of rules and very different from a governmental fund and fiduciary funds. We have color-coded the third layer below that for your convenience. The blue are the major operating funds of the city. General fund, water utility fund, wastewater, and storm drainage. The yellow signifies these are all our capital improvement projects. And the green are in-between operating and special revenue funds. So we are debt service funds, all our pit funds, all our TERS funds, hot revenue funds, they're all shown in green. Because we have 57 funds, I couldn't show you all 57 boxes on this one slide, so we've condensed some similar ones together and collapsed them. So overall, this is the city's fund structure. And because of the complexity and the different rules of accounting standards followed for each one of these, it makes it very difficult for, for finance folks on the government sector as compared to the public sector or commercial accounting. What we're finding out now is that the new generation is not wanting to work for the governmental sector. Very few people are going in this field. When you see Andy and Connie back there, that's pretty much the last generation that will be coming up. Very few are going into this field.
So if you're going to college and looking, "What should I take to have a job opportunity?" might be the place to go.
That's true. That's very true. So this is, this is the all-city funds, total budget of the city for everything that the city manager spoke about. Our next year total is 365.4 million dollars. And how this is divided, general fund is about 18% or 67.9 million dollars. Water utility is 6%, 21 million dollars. Wastewater is 3% or 12.5 million. Storm drainage is the smallest piece of the pie. It's about 1% or 2.4 million dollars. Debt service, 13.6 million dollars or 4%. The largest piece overall budget is the CIP, Capital Improvement Program. 68% of our funding is dedicated towards capital improvements program.
I know, I think I was expecting after the bond and everything, for our debt service to be so much larger. It's actually not that large.
Well, we haven't issued the debt yet.
Oh, yeah, okay. I was wondering, I was wondering.
All of the blue is gonna get transferred to the debt service eventually.
Okay, I was wondering, I was like, I was expecting it to be a little bigger, but yeah, it is gonna get bigger. Okay.
Of the 294 million dollars that the voters approved, we have issued about 45 million dollars to date. So they'll be issued in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is this, is this our first budget over 300? Or was last year's over 300?
Uh, no, Mayor. This is the first time ever. Actually, this is a record. Last year, our total was 251.4 million, so an increase of about 114 million or 45%. So we're, like the manager discussed before, we're investing in our infrastructure, investing in our workforce. So here's a highlight of the total overall budget. 365.4 million dollars for all city funds, 245, 248.5 for CIP in fiscal year 2025. 54 new positions for a total net of 433 positions recommended in this budget. The property tax rate, that city council has already voted, that it will stay at 46.93, which is the current tax rate. What we don't know yet is between the debt service and the MNO piece, and I'll show you in a minute what, what I mean by that. We know there's gonna be a rate increase for water service next year and also for the wastewater system. We're not proposing any change in storm drainage fees in next year's budget. There is a 2.5% increase in the solid waste service rates, and that's based, based on our contract with Texas, Texas disposal systems. So the 54 positions that are, they're all listed here individually, and their dollar amount, and their funding source. I'm not gonna go over all 54 positions by name, but I'll give you a very highlight total. There are 30 new positions for water utilities, for a total of 3.2 million dollars. 12 new positions for the police department, for a total of 1.1 million dollars. Six new positions for information technology department, for a total of 639,000 dollars. There are two new positions for library, for a total of 156,000 dollars. I'm rounding these numbers to the nearest thousand. Two new positions for our parks department, for a total of 152,000 dollars. One new position in the city attorney's office, for a total of 98,000 dollars. One new position in the communications department, for a total of 83,000 dollars. So all 54 new positions add up to 5.5 million dollars. And you'll see that on this slide here. If you look at the last line, total new positions, 54, for a total of 5.5 million dollars. But as the manager spoke earlier, we also have reductions in the positions. So there are 18 reductions. So if you look at the bottom two lines, the, the 18 positions net, resulting in a net savings of 1.99 million dollars. For a net position addition, after you take the new positions, subtract the deletions, we come up with 36 net new positions for a total cost, net cost of 3.5 million dollars. New equipment proposed in the city manager's recommended budget totals, 2 million dollars. They're listed here by department and function. The details are provided in the, in the budget document. You will see in the budget document exactly what type of equipment is being recommended for purchase in next year's budget and by, or for which city department. Our CIP spending plan for next year is 248.5 million dollars. To the left is the various funding sources for our CIP plan. I won't spend too much time here because I have a few slides further down that will give you a highlight of the CIP budget. So major operating funds. Remember from the fund structure slide, we had four major operating funds. City's general fund, water utility fund, wastewater utility fund, and storm drainage fund. So I'll go over those funds now, and I will go in the same format and sequence, so it'll be familiar to you once I go over the first one.
Just noting that the train has passed, I think this is the third time since we've started, and without a single horn, we haven't had to stop conversation, which we did for eight years. It was pretty nice. Just a little something that happens, you know? It took so long to get that done. Everything is so hard.
So for the four operating funds, we will first go over the five-year forecast, what the picture looks like over the five-year forecast. Then we'll go over next year's budget, and then I will cover some of the highlights for next year. And then I will also show you, when we talk about water utility and wastewater utility, why we think there's going to be a rate increase. What, what causes the rate increase? We'll go over that. So the five-year forecast, why do we do it? The financial forecast is an essential part of the annual budget process to help with decision-making. The second reason we do that is the purpose of the financial forecast is to evaluate current and future fiscal conditions to help guide policy and program and service delivery decisions. And finally, a financial forecast is a fiscal management tool that presents estimated information based on past, current, and projected financial conditions. And that's why it's important that we do a five-year forecast every year. So we're gonna start with general fund. This is our city's major operating fund. So the five-year forecast is based on these general key assumptions that we have used to come up with the five-year forecast. For existing properties' value growth, we have assumed 10% next year, and then 15% thereafter. This is citywide value growth for core city and within TERS, all of our TERSs. Existing properties' taxable value ranges anywhere from 5.8 billion to 11.2 billion over the five-year period. New construction value, we have maintained it at a conservative 350 million dollars a year. Sales tax growth is 15% assumed over the five-year period. Development revenue, it's a jump in year number one in 2025. If you'll recall, city manager talked about the changes in fee schedule that the community development departments have implemented. They're gonna be raising fees, bringing in more dollars. So we see a jump in '25, and then it's levels off from years four through five, from years two through five, at 10% a year. Compensation for our employees is assumed at 4.5% next year and 5% thereafter. And expenditures is assumed at 5% next year and 3% thereafter. So based on those assumptions, this is a very high-level five-year forecast for the city's general fund. So let me first help you get acquainted with the format. So on the far left is the descriptions. We have revenue, expenditures, transfers, and fund balance. Now, this is at a very high level. We've collapsed it from 500 lines to 16 lines here. But what I would like to draw your attention to is if you look at the revenue line, which is line six, it ranges anywhere from 77 million to 113 million dollars, based on those key assumptions that we, we assumed. Line four is the total expenditures for the general fund, which ranges from anywhere from 83 million to 102 million dollars in year number five. The most important line here is line 16, the fund balance. Every single year, we have maintained the fund balance in excess of what the city charter requires. The city charter requires that we shall maintain at least 25% of our total expenditures in reserve. expenditures in reserves. So every year of those five years, we have exceeded the the minimum requirements. So that's good news. However, to maintain that, we had to minimize cash funding of CIP in years two and three. If you if you look at line ten, this is the cash contribution from general fund to fund CIPs, so we don't borrow as much. It goes from eight point eight million dollars in year number one, drops slightly in year number two, two point five, and then starts climbing back up from six point six to almost fourteen million in year number four. But overall-
Perez, you're saying you have to reduce it because that's when all the debt is being issued, so you have to clear room for debt service essentially?
That, and we're also increasing our expenditures, recurring expenditures. But overall, we're in a very good position. So here's the general fund budget for next year. Same format, but instead of five years, you're only looking at one year for next year. So the the third column from the left, the heading is titled CM proposed budget, city managers proposed budget for twenty four twenty five. So I'll focus on that column. So if you look at the revenues for general fund, next year is seventy seven point four million dollars. Line fourteen, total expenditures and transfers out for next year is eighty one, eighty three point two million dollars. Line fifteen is a negative five point eight million dollars. If you notice, the revenues are slightly less than total expenditures, which is five point eight million dollars. We're drawing down the the reserve or excess reserve for one time expenditures for CIP And then lastly, line sixteen, our fund balance for the general fund is projected to be twenty one point three million dollars for next year, which exceeds the city charter requirement for our reserves. If you use the formula prescribed by the city charter, the reserves, we had to keep at least twenty point eight million dollars. So we have exceeded that next year. So highlights for the general fund for next year. Seventy seven point four million dollars for revenues and transfers in, which is sixteen point three million dollar increase from the year before budget or twenty five point eight percent. Eighty three point two million expenditures and transfers out, which is an increase of seven point eight million or eleven percent. The projected fund balance is twenty one point three million, and the required fund balance reserve is twenty point eight, so we have exceeded by half a million dollars. So where does the revenue come from? Where are the major sources of revenue for the general fund? I'll just highlight the top three. If you notice, property tax and sales tax are neck and neck now. Twenty six percent property tax projected for next year, twenty six percent sales tax projected for next year. Increasing sales tax is a good thing. However, it's a double edged sword. It also increases volatility. So during slow economic times, you will see a decline in the rate of growth in the sales tax collections. Property tax, on the other hand, is more stable and steady from year to year. The third major area is the development fees on the left side, the blue slice of the pie, which is eighteen percent, projected next year at thirteen point nine eight or fourteen million dollars.
I have a question. How much did we get into in development fees last year? If you happen to have that information?
So we were budgeted for this year, eleven point four million dollars for development revenues.
Okay. And this is what we have-
Through May, we have collected a little over five million dollars.
Okay.
And next year, we're proposing thirteen point nine or almost fourteen million dollars.
All right, thank you.
So that's the revenue, sources of revenue for the general fund. And here's a quick look. Here's a quick look for the uses of that general fund revenue. Here again, I'll I'll highlight the top four cost drivers for the general fund revenue. Number one, in blue, public safety, twenty five percent or twenty point three million dollars. Number two is transfers out, fifteen point two million dollars primarily for our CIP. Number three is water utilities or public works, portion of it or division of it, fifteen percent as twelve point two million dollars. And then number four, our parks department or Parks and Recreation Department at ten percent, eight point seven million dollars. And then you can see all the rest from city manager's office all the way down to library, So that's our total requirements for the general fund.
What is nondepartmental? Just curious.
So these are the types of funding expenditures that we budget that are not specific to a one city department. So a good example will be economic development, the three day eighty incentive payments, they're budgeted here. Council initiatives, first year on us, is budgeted in here. So they're not specific to a city department. Hope that answers your question. Yes. So we just received our certified tax rule. We haven't had time to fully analyze it yet, but we are scheduled to present this information before council on August sixth. So I'll have a lot more details for you on the on the assessed valuations for this year as compared to last year. What the tax rates will be are certified, as you well know, our certified tax calculations, even though the city staff can do it, our financial advisor can do it, is not certified. It has to be completed by or prepared by the Hays County Tax Assessor Collector's Office. We have submitted our request. We're anticipating that information to be back to us before August sixth. So we'll provide this information as well. We do know the current tax rate is forty six ninety three. The next year's, the last column, will be forty six ninety three. But what we don't know is the breakdown between maintenance and operation and the INS or interest in sinking fund component. We will also give you the average home impact on an average value based on the assessed valuations for this year. And we'll compare that for you between twenty three and twenty four. More to come on August sixth. Here's our tax rate slide. It covers, at least since I've been able to track it, it adds up to about thirty seven years. I'll highlight nineteen ninety two was our highest tax rate at sixty nine point two six per one hundred dollars. Our lowest tax rate was in two thousand and eight at twenty seven point zero seven per one hundred dollars. And then our current rate is at forty six ninety three, which is the last last bar. The two colors here, the the dark blue represents the maintenance and operation tax rate, and the gold represents the interest in sinking fund or debt service tax rate. So this is the total tax rate if you live within the city of Kyle's jurisdiction. The largest two are school district, fifty three percent for Hays CISD, twenty one percent for city of Kyle, and then of course, Hays County at twenty eight or thirteen percent. And then you have the other jurisdictions, ACC and Conservation District, Groundwater So this is a comparison of the city's current tax rate with our ten peer cities that we compare ourselves to. We don't know at this point what the other cities will be proposing for their tax rate, but based on our current tax rates for everybody else, we are in the eighth position before Flugerville, San Antonio, and San Marcos. Buda is the lowest on this, but I would imagine their tax rates will change shortly. This is a slide on our sales tax collections. Similar to that line graph that city manager showed earlier, every single year, our sales tax collections has increased, and we are expecting it to increase next year as well. If you compare between twenty twenty four, our estimate for this year, our projections for this year is that we will collect seventeen point eight million dollars by the end of this fiscal year, and we're projecting twenty million dollars next year, twenty point one million dollars. The difference between the gold and the green bar is about thirteen percent. But when you look from budget to budget, we're increasing it by fifteen percent next year, which is which is very helpful.
That's what I was going to ask you, because earlier comment when you said that, you know, the economy has a lot to do with that, but really for us, we've only increased every year, even even on down economies, we're still increasing not as much as we would with a good economy, right? But we've always had a steady increase, correct?
As we have added businesses, commercial enterprises within our jurisdiction, that has gone up. The online sales, internet sales, has helped us tremendously. Yeah.
Can I go to page eighty five back again, Perez? When we're looking at the number there, you have Austin at forty four cents and then us at forty six. So is that showing that we're just a slightly higher in Austin property tax?
Yes, but you have to keep in mind, the tax rate is is a function of the value of the property. So we we also have the lowest on the slide many slides ago, that our average household is less than what Austin is. Their home median average household is probably four X. So we're having to get a lot more. We you still have to raise the same amount of money per household because you have to provide police and services to it. So it's just, it's it's meant to be a guide, but it's not meant to tell you everything. It's not a definitive like, oh, we're more expensive than Austin. No, their forty four cents is going to collect three or four times per household what our forty four cents does.
Their certified tax rule is much, much larger than the city of Kyle's, and that's what mayor is saying, that they for every penny, they raise a lot more, ten to fifteen times more probably compared to Kyle. So now we're going to talk about the water utility fund. This is our second of the four operating funds, and we're going to go in the same format. We'll go over the key assumptions for the five year forecast. We'll go with the five year forecast and then next year's budget and then highlight. But for water and wastewater utility in particular, I will share with you the reasons why we think there will be a rate increase, why it's needed. So the key assumptions for a water utility, we're assuming a six percent growth in our customer base over the five year period. Oil and operating and maintenance expenditures will grow at a clip of five percent per year. Compensation is the same as general fund, four and a half next year and thereafter, five percent. Transfer to the general fund will stay constant at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then the debt service will fluctuate based on actual debt service requirements of the water utility. So here's the five year forecast for the water utility. Well, first, we have to know that these numbers, these forecasts, are based on existing rates today. They do not include any rate increases or projected rate increases. So based on today's rates, what does the five year forecast look like? So I'll highlight the same five lines that I did for the general fund. So if you look at line four, it ranges in year number one, it ranges from nineteen point five million dollars to twenty four point seven million dollars in year number five. That's the revenue projected with the six percent growth at existing rates. Line number fourteen, this is the total requirements of that utility. What will it take to run the utility for operations, to pay personnel, to pay for water supply, to pay for equipment, to pay for debt service? It ranges from twenty four point four million in year number one to thirty point two million in year number five. But here's the key, line fifteen. Every single year, the requirements exceed the revenue at existing rates. So if we did nothing to the rates, we will be drawing down the utilities' reserves over the five year period. So line fifteen shows the gap between revenues at existing rates and what is projected for the requirements for the utility. It ranges anywhere from five million to five point eight, five point nine million dollars per year. If you look at the fund balance, in year number one, we have drawn down the fund balance by almost five million dollars. Year number two, another five point four million dollars we have drawn down. Year number three, four and five, if we don't do anything to the rates, we will be in a negative position. So on August sixth, the consultant that we hired, the city manager, talked about, Reftellis Financials, they will go over with you by year what the revenue requirements are of the water utility and what the rate impact is of that gap. And then what the rate impact is going to be system wide, average, as compared to the rate increase projected for residential, multifamily, commercial, and irrigation on the customer class side.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you explain transfers out, what goes into that category?
So transfers out has two components in the water utility. One is to the general fund, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year.
And that covers what?
So that is in lieu of taxes. So the owners of the system are the taxpayers in the general fund. So if this was a private utility, they would be paying us property taxes, they would be paying us some sort of fees, franchise. So since it's owned by the general fund, the taxpayers, they're getting a return on their equity. Some years ago, it was set at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we have not changed that over time. We were waiting on the cost of service study to be done and see what the consultants recommend. So that has stayed the same, and you will see the same transfer on the wastewater side.
But the other the other half, the rest of it on the transfers?
The rest of it is indirect cost. So the city manager talk about has talked about the indirect cost allocation plan study next year. We did an internal study this year, and we're asking the utilities, the three utilities to pay its fair share back to the general fund. So based on our internal allocation study that we did, our analysis that we did, that's the allocation assigned to the water utility that will be paying back to the-
So I I want to try to to dive into that just a little bit more because indirect cost plan, when you just say it, it's it sounds extremely complicated, and perhaps it is. But what we look at is central service positions. So my position, the ACMs, AMI, finance, HR, those kinds of services that provide services to the entire organization, to water and wastewater and storm drainage and all the other funds. Our our positions are budgeted in the general fund, so but a portion of our costs really needs to be reflected in these other funds. We've tried to budget position by position- We've tried to budget position by position basis and assign them, a portion of them in different funds in the past. But as we've gotten larger and more complicated, the best way to do that is with a formal indirect cost plan. So we'll have a consultant come in, they study all of these costs and come up with basis to allocate costs based on F T Es, purchases, square footages of buildings, things like that, so that you can have a formal basis for assigning costs to these individual funds. It's really important for grants, too. If you get a grant, you have, you can't just have an assumption of what it is. You have to have a study that supports where those costs go. So because of that, we believe the general fund has been absorbing more costs than they would otherwise have to pay with a formal plan. So we've tried to put in a placeholder of our own cost allocation until we build that own plan going forward. But it's, general fund has been subsidizing the cost for other funds. So that's what this plan is meant to do, is to correct that in a formal way. And we'll have a detailed study that comes back and does that. Hopefully, that makes sense. It's a, accountants kind of go through this. We, Perez and I love indirect cost plans. But that's what it's designed to do, is put the money in the right bucket and the costs in the right buckets. And everybody needs to pay for their proper share of costs, and they are what they are. Does that help?
Yeah.
They are what they are.
I'm gonna say what Jesse is thinking, that's the fun in the fun account. So this is the proposed budget for the water utility fund for next year. The third column from far right, the city manager proposed budget for next year. I'm gonna highlight the same four lines for your consideration. The revenue projected for next year is nineteen, of course, this is at existing rates without any rate increases. Revenue is projected for next year is nineteen point five million dollars, which is an increase of almost two million dollars, eleven point three percent. Total expenditures and transfers out is twenty-four point four million dollars, or six point eight million dollar increase from the prior budget or approved budget. And the last line is the ending fund balance of nine million dollars. On line fifteen, we're showing that we are drawing down reserves by five million dollars if we did not adjust the rates. On the next slide, this is the source of revenue for the water utility. Ninety-one percent is from our utility rates, seventeen point seven, seven million. Other fees and charges is four percent, and then very little from miscellaneous. On the use of funds, I'll just highlight the top, top three cost drivers. Number one is water supply cost. Fifty percent of the water utility's requirements is for water, water supply. The next largest slice of the pie is water operations at twenty-three percent, or five point six million dollars. And the third is transfers out at eleven percent. And then you see the rest of it, debt service, I T, engineering, administrative services. Overall, highlight of the water utility, nineteen point five million in revenues and transfers in, twenty-four point four million in expenditures and transfers out, which includes the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar equity transfer to general fund. Nine point one million in estimated ending fund balance. We've already talked about the rate increase and why it is being needed. And what's important to note here is the rate increase will vary between customer classes. This is a comparison of average monthly bill, residential monthly bill for our customers as compared to the other ten peer cities, as well as some water providers within our city limits. So this is based on five thousand gallons a month, and it includes the fixed charge and the volume charge for all cities. On the low end, you'll see George, New Braunfels at twenty-five seventy-three. And on the high end is Southwest Water at a hundred and two dollars.
Perez, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a chart that could also do the comparison average monthly with commercial billing?
We can do that. We don't have it handy, but we can do that.
So that way, we can have the difference of like, the usage of what all the commercial businesses are using compared to the residential. And I know that it's been brought up before about comparing residential homes versus apartments. Seeing the comparison on that, I know it could be difficult getting that kind of chart. Because those are some of the concerns that that I hear from residents about the commercial use of water. You know, we're overdeveloping, and they're using a lot more water than than homes. And it's just, that way, we can have a breakdown for the next coming year to see how much commercial water was used or water used through commercial and development and compared to residential.
On August sixth, we'll ask the consultant to show by customer class what the bill impact is going to be
Okay.
of any rate increases that they're recommending.
So that comparison between residential and commercial, I kind of understand. But apartments are residential. So it's separating out, oh, well, this apartment complex uses this much water and individual homes use this much water. That's a really more complex.
They have that.
Generally, they're not individually built by apartment.
They'll have that information in the cost of service study. But the classes that we have in the city, you will see is residential, commercial, which has multifamily in it. We've asked them to separate multifamily from commercial. And then we have irrigation. And then, of course, we have outside city limit customer class. But we'll, council member will ask the consultant to include that in their presentation.
It's just so that way, we can have stats for future use. Because again, five years from now, we're gonna have the same conversation. But at least we can start having a breakdown now as we continue to grow and as we continue to have that. We can have something like as a, as a building block to see where we're at. And then maybe every year, we can look at those numbers to calculate to see where we're at.
Yes, sir. So we're gonna do the same thing for the wastewater utility. This is our third major operating fund of the city. The key assumptions are identical to what we went over for the water utility. So I won't go over that. So here's the five-year forecast for the wastewater system. Here again, it's important to note that these numbers that you're seeing for the forecast are without rate increases. They're based on existing rates. So the same four lines I'm gonna highlight for you. Line four, total revenues ranges from twelve point three million to fifteen point five million in year number five. Total expenditures, line fifteen. And transfers out ranges from fourteen point five in year one to a high of twenty-five point three million in year number five. Line sixteen, the deficit in each one of those years ranges from two point two million next year, if we didn't do anything with the rates, two point two million negative to a high of nine point eight million in year number five. And then, of course, the last line, line eighteen, which is the projected fund balance, we're drawing down the fund balance and we didn't adjust the rates. In year number three, four, and five, we're projecting negative fund balances. If our revenue and expenditures as projected, stay on course.
And that is including the commercial increases or not?
This does not include any increases to any rates.
Include the commercial increases.
What I'm seeing that draws it down is the future debt service, meaning that you're anticipating wastewater treatment plant expansion through the five years. That's what's driving it down, I'm assuming, some kind of debt issuance?
It's both, combination of operating cost as well as debt service.
You do have a hundred million dollar C I P for the wastewater treatment.
That's what that debt service covers.
Yes, sir, I believe that's correct.
Yes.
So that's part of that. And, you know, I think we're looking at, I don't have the final numbers from the consultant, but the revenue requirements is twenty-five percent increase. It's just a question of how you break that up into classes. As I said, I think residential will be far less than that, commercial will be higher. But there are options of how you do the rates, of how you stair-step this over time. And so we'll give you a variety of options to see how to fix this. It's, we, it looks bleak when you see negative twenty-two million, but we know there's gonna be revenue changes.
I think every city that's growing will have that pressure.
I agree.
And it's just because you're talking in today's revenues versus tomorrow's expenditures. You have to keep up with the growth, and you have to, you have to build the infrastructure for growth that hasn't yet happened. And as long as you're moving with a growth projection, you're gonna have that challenge.
Right.
Eventually, it should level out, but not yet.
That's our hope. And the other thing to say about both water and wastewater rates is they don't have an inflationary adjustment associated with them. So with property taxes, the values go up, or you have sales tax that go up with inflation. There is nothing like that with water and wastewater. You have to adjust the rates to keep up with that, so it's a little different.
We actually, and I'd be interested to know what the studies produce, but there was some independent studies done from journalists over our water rates over the last ten years. And if you, you know, we, because every, when we did the ARWA project, we did a couple ten percent raises, I think maybe a five percent raise through the, through the years. But over the ten-year period that they studied, we were actually on the very low end. I think it was like a average of one point six percent or something like that, annual increase in the rates when you, when you take it over a long period of time. So it's, it's, we've actually, over time, been increasing our rates by inflation or even less. So they have to go up in order to stay on par. They have to. There's no option. And I think we've managed it pretty well. And Perez is kind of a wizard at that through the years, keeping the, keeping everything in mind and trying to keep the costs as low as possible while we expand. I think that's a testament to it, that low number.
Yeah, because I remember when I first hit the dais, we had talked about every year going up ten percent, and we've been able to keep it down from that.
Yeah. We still had to increase some, but not, not as much.
Not the level, but a lot of that had to do with the growth because the growth coming in actually helped level, taper some of that off. So residents didn't get the full ten percent burden because we had other projects coming online.
Like, for example, I think there were a couple years, maybe just one or two, where that transfer out from the, from the wastewater and water fund did not happen. And essentially, the general fund, so that we didn't have to increase the rates. So that, but the indirect cost essentially, we absorbed it with the general fund. Your way of presenting it is hard to, it's not, it wasn't my full perspective on it. At the time, I was, I, it seemed like the general fund was subsidizing. All we were doing was eliminating that. But really, you, what you're saying is accurate in terms of indirect costs. And so to put that back in makes sense. But there are a lot of ways to avoid rate increases, is what I'm saying. And it's all, it's all fungible. We just want to be accurate with the costs and still move the, you know, move the city forward.
And it is a policy decision, really.
It's, it's one hundred percent, it's too much within our control. I wish it was less.
And Mayor, to answer your specific question on debt, it's on line eight. For the wastewater utility, you'll see that we're projecting new debt service on new debt, ranging anywhere from four point nine million dollars to almost ten million in year number five. So next year's budget for the water utility, same third column from the right, city manager's proposed budget, same four lines I'll highlight real quick. Total revenue, twelve point two million, which is about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars more than the year before, five point seven percent increase. Line fifteen, total requirements of the utility, fourteen point five million dollars, which is an increase of four point one million or forty percent increase from year before. The drawdown on the fund balance is about two point two million dollars if we didn't do anything with the rates. And the estimated ending fund balance next year is ten point nine. So the sources of funds for the wastewater utility is pretty straightforward. Ninety-four percent is from rates. And then we have four percent from other interest income and things like that. And miscellaneous charges is about two percent. So the uses of revenue for the wastewater utility, the top four categories of cost drivers are, number one, debt service, twenty-four percent. Number two, wastewater treatment plant operations at twenty-one percent, or three million. Number three, wastewater operations, nineteen percent, or two point eight billion dollars. And then, of course, transfers out at thirteen percent, or one point nine percent. One point nine million, sorry. Here's the summary of the wastewater utility fund for next year. Twelve point three million in total revenues, fourteen point five million in expenditures and transfers out, which includes the six hundred and fifty thousand equity transfer to the general fund, ten point nine million in estimated fund balance. Then, of course, we've already talked about rate increase. There will be a rate increase projected for next year. But between classes, it will vary. Based on our current rates, this is our wastewater average monthly residential bill. We are in the number four position comparing to our peer cities. Flugerville is number ten. We couldn't get San Antonio's information because City of San Antonio doesn't do wastewater. They have a separate entity, S O S, does their wastewater. We weren't able to get their information in time. Next up, storm drainage, our last of the four operating, major operating funds. Same key assumptions as we did for water and wastewater. Without rate increases, here again, no changes to the drainage fees, our five-year forecast. Same four lines. Revenue ranges from two point two million in year number one to two point eight million in year number five. Total expenditures ranges two point six million to two point nine million in year number five. And then the, the drawdown on fund balance is not quite as dramatic as water and wastewater, but there is some drawdown over the five-year period. You can see that on line number nine. And then finally, the fund balance, estimated fund balance in year number one is below the target of twenty-five percent. The target is six hundred and fifty thousand. We're close, but it's five hundred and eighteen. And then in year number five, it changes to a negative position. Once we do the study, the consultant next, next year, we will be in a much better position to make recommendations to council what needs to be done with the fees on the drainage side. So next year's budget for the drainage utility, third column from the far right, city manager's proposed budget. Revenues total, two point two million. Expenditures total, two point six, with a drawdown of three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars and a fund balance of five hundred and eighteen. Highlights, we've already covered the revenue and expenditures. No increase proposed for storm drainage fees next year. So here are the sources of revenue for storm drainage. The largest piece, or forty-seven percent, is from commercial customers, one point one million dollars. Number two is forty-two percent from our residential customers, nine hundred and forty-two thousand. And then miscellaneous, which includes interest income and other miscellaneous charges, about eleven percent. So how do we use this money, the uses of storm drainage fee revenues? Number one, operations and maintenance, fifty-two percent, one point four million dollars. The next large slice is administration, thirty-four percent, eight, eight ninety-three. And then the third driver is C I P, eight percent, at two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So very quickly, I'm gonna talk about the five-year C I P plan. This covers from fiscal years twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine. This covers from fiscal years 2025 to 2029. At a very high level, we have a total of 104 projects in our five-year spending plan. The five-year spending plan totals $848.6 million over the five-year period. 56% of that funding, spending plan is funded. We know exactly where the money is going to come from. For example, road bonds that the voters have authorized. We know that we're going to issue debt for the wastewater treatment plant. So those are what I classify as funded. The unfunded, which is about 44% or $371 million, these are the projects that we will determine as we move through the time horizon over the five-year period. How much of that will be funded with geo bonds? How much of that will be funded with CO bonds, cash funding, fees, park development fees, impact fees? Those types of things we will develop as we move through the spectrum. And at the bottom, I've given you the annual spending plan. In next year's, 248.5 million. 26 is 255, 27 is 204 million, and then it kind of tapers back. But I think as we move through the spectrum, the last two years will also move up over the, over the time horizon. The detailed CIP projects are all provided in the budget document, every single one of them of the 104 projects, what they are, what the forecast is of the spending plan. So I've taken the 104 projects and condensed them into cost categories for you. I didn't want to go through all 104 projects today, so I've condensed them into 17 cost categories of spending categories to show you where we are spending money. Number one, as the city manager spoke earlier, park improvements over the five-year period, we are planning to spend $25 million. Sportsplex, $65 million. Vibe Trail. I get, I get stuck on the vibe because it's, it's our spelling for Kyle, but dictionary says otherwise.
It's the most perfect name we've ever come up with.
So Vibe Trail is $4.7 million. The 2020 parks bond, what is remaining, city share is half. The other half is from the Hays County participation, total 17.4 million. The 2022 road bond program over the five-year period will add up to $232 million. Streets improvement program will add up to 28.3. Traffic intersection improvements, $30 million. Beautification roundabouts, another $5 million. Rail siding, Kohler's Railroad Overpass, $9.2 million. Property acquisition program will total roughly $20.5 million. Downtown redevelopment, we have a placeholder, about $6 million. But I, as we develop the, the plan for the downtown, this number is going to go up over that same time horizon. Water utility, these are the two main capital improvement project categories. Water utility system improvements over the five-year period is about $141 million. Wastewater, 198 million. Storm drainage, 13.2 million. Ters number two, where we have the roads and roundabouts, 34.4 million. Ters number six, which is the downtown ters. We have a placeholder for a parking garage, $18 million. And then the last category, these are the small ticket items for public works, like their parking lot, their garage improvements, it's about less than a million dollars. So when you add up all 17 categories over the five-year period, it adds up to $848.6 million. So where's that money going to come from? So the, basically, this funding source identifies how we're going to fund that $848 million. We, we have about $12 million from ARPA grant fund. And as we get more grants, the burden on the other funding sources will come down. Total outstanding bond debt, this is required as part of our budget process discussion. But you'll recall that on July 16th, I came before city council and I presented this portion of the budget. So most of these slides will look familiar, but I'll go through real quick. So over the next five-year period, we talked about our CIP spending plan of $848.6 million. Over the five-year period, we're looking at issuing roughly $607 million in new debt. So this slide is, is broken in two halves. The top half is all tax-supported type of anticipated bond issues, which totals about $374 million. The major chunk of it is the 2022 road bond program, $249 million. If the voters approve, the sportsplex will have $65 million for that project. But you can see all the various road improvements that we have identified. That adds up to a total of $374 million for tax voter type debt. And then the lower half is for self-funded debt, meaning they're self-sustaining. They'll come from, the payments will come from water utility, wastewater utility, storm drainage, and the terses. That's another 233 million for a total of $607 million projected. These numbers will shift between years and maybe even go outside the five-year window. So this is the forecast of the city's bond debt position. So basically, existing debt plus new debt minus annual debt payments, what is going to be our forecasted, forecasted position. By year number five, we're looking at a net debt position of $593 million if we were to issue all of the 600 million in new debt. That's, at the bottom two lines, you can see each year what it is increasing by. And then by year number five, if we stay on our planned schedule, it will start to decline. Here's our five-year city's debt per capita. This is at the gross level. All debt regardless of whether it's tax-supported or self-funded, because all our debt so far that we are, we have issued and will be issuing in the next five years, the underlying credit that backs those bonds will be tax, property tax. So that's why I show you the total debt per capita. It ranges anywhere from $2,600 per capita in 2024 to projected of 8,037 in 2029. Here's the city's debt as a percentage of assessed valuation. These are projected assessed valuations. And here again, we're going from 2.4% to 5.86 or roughly 6%. Proposed fees and rates. There's a total of 479 different fees in our fee schedule. I literally counted each one of them.
That's the definition of counting beans right there.
I wanted to make sure y'all got a good feel for what's in our fee schedule, the various types of fees. Anywhere from just copying fees for open records all the way down to rates and charges. There are 479 different fees.
It's like the end-of-year inventory where you cut every, you got to count every nut and bolt and everything else.
I can just see him in his office, just got it all mapped out.
So next year, the proposed budget includes 34 new fees that did not exist before. There are 276 fees that are being changed, modified, or the title is being changed. In some form or fashion, it is being changed. Number of fees that are going up, 33. 39 fees are being dollarized, they're changing 39 of those fees. 33 are going up, six are decreasing. Number of rate changes pending, there are 130 different rate charges on our fee schedule for water and wastewater that we could not complete yet until after August 6th, when city council makes a decision as to which options y'all prefer. A complete listing of all fees and charges are provided in the budget document. So we've talked about the four major operating funds. And this is the rest of the 53 funds. I won't go over these. These are just some examples of what those funds are, debt service fund, the ters fund, geo bond fund. But the complete listing, everything that we have in these funds, every single line item for revenue, every single line item for expenditures is provided in the accompanying budget document that we have posted, that we have provided to you. Next steps. The city manager went over these, so I won't go over the details. A complete budget timeline and the document is posted. And here, Mayor, before we get to the next one, we're going to talk about city council's budget options. If y'all want to take a pause.
Is the, is the council budget the last of the budgeting items to go over? I'm going to recommend we take a seven-minute break and reconvene at 11:35, and that'll give city manager time to let staff that doesn't have anything to do with the council go ahead and get an early start to the day. Does that sound good?
Yeah, that sounds great. And, and just if I could, since I have all the staff here, I just want to take a moment to thank not only Pravez, Andy and Connie and the finance team, but all the staff for their work on this budget. This is a lot of information. This is the executive summary of the budget. So it's a lot of information and they've all worked extremely hard to put that together. So thank you for all of that. And also thank you for the council. I know we spent a lot of time with you this morning, but also over the last several months, we've spent a tremendous amount of time with you going through this, getting your input. So thank you, everyone, for all of your work.
Does anybody have any more feedback? Go ahead.
Yes, if you don't mind, I know we, we want to try to get them out of here, but I just had at least two follow-up questions for staff, referencing back, going back to the original program. Page 16, when it comes to the 311 program, my questions would be, which city departments will be included in this? Would it be code enforcement, public works, or the police? And what would be, number two, the timeline, what you should be looking at trying to get a pilot program or a protocol program going on to, like a beta type of testing system going for the residents on that?
If I, if I start to name off all the departments that, that will be encompassed in 311, I know I'm going to miss some, but the major ones are our public works department, our parks department, our code enforcement department. There's a handful of others, but the ones that usually roll into a 311 that will not be part of our initial launch will be our animal services department. That will stay with the police department. And the police department obviously will stay as a separate, because 311 is a non-emergency. But those are the major ones and they encompass, that encompasses 95% of service requests that come in through the city. And, and as far as the, the beta launch, we, without saying too much, it'll be before January 2025. I mean, we'll be looking at November, December of having kind of a, an internal soft training and beta launch that will be, that will be, already be working in the, in the system before we launch. We're looking at, we're looking at Q1 full launch for, of 2025 for the 311 system.
And page 17, the database for the attendance system. Is that going to be something that we're going to need a contract out yearly? Or is it going to be an internal database that we're going to develop for the attendance for employees? If that's, if that's what I was understanding.
Talking about the time and attendance? If that's, that's taking our, our payroll system, our, our logging hours for our employees, and that's take, that's making it digital and making a lot of it. We have a tremendous amount across the entire city of manual processes, of writing down hours and submitting them in a paper manner. And that's taking it and making it digital and in a internal software system.
Okay.
So it's, it's not contracting out in any way.
We're not going to contract the company to do all that for us.
That's all internal.
We, we have that package as part of what's called our ERP system. It's just never been utilized. And right now, most of our employees are submitting that around the city through emails and other documentation. And then that goes to payroll and they have to assemble all of that information and keystroke it in to make that happen. It's just a labor-intensive process. And inaccurate at times. It takes a lot of reviews. And if there's problems that payroll sees, then they have to get back with those employees to correct it.
We have some really fun, going back to 311, some really fun and exciting marketing and promotion opportunities for city council plan we haven't told you guys about yet, but it's going to be.
Interesting.
Stay tuned.
I have a question, not about 311, but under what category remains the Hays Cowal Women's Center? I didn't see anything specific for them. And are we, I know we have a service agreement with them. Are we keeping the same funding or are we analyzing the times that we have utilized our services to see if we can increase our budgets?
I don't know that number off the top of my head unless anyone on the finance team does. I may have to get back with you, Councilmember Parsley. I don't, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
But do we have them budget like we had them the year before?
Pravez, can you address that?
What was the specific question?
Are they Hays Cowal Women's Center?
Is that money still in the budget?
I think we continue it.
I, I think we do as well. I just don't know the number off the top of my head. We'd be glad to get that to you.
I just want to know how, like, you know, what kind of services are they providing for us? If we keep utilizing, and if there is any need that we can see for them to increase if we have been utilizing them, which I know that we do.
I think the chief stepped out. It may have, I don't know if he's got any of that information, but we'll be glad to get it for you. I just, unfortunately, I don't know.
Maybe for the next meeting I would like to have that.
Or we can email it to the council.
I'd just like to make one last statement real quick on page 39, referencing the sidewalks.
You're referring to the, the presentation, correct?
Yes, the presentation, yeah. I'm going back to all this, because I wanted everybody to go through the presentation before we interrupt the questions.
Sure.
The last statement I'd like to make referencing the sidewalks is that I want residents to understand is that we're going to look at developing and improving, improving our infrastructure. But we also have to look at the pros and cons that comes along with that, including in school areas, school, the areas where schools are at. Because when we start developing sidewalks, and I know there's been some Facebook postings of people taking photos of children walking on the side of the road, the pros and cons on that is, yes, we can develop, and, and it is our responsibility as city council member or the city to develop a better infrastructure for residents. But also, you got to look at also the state laws. When you develop sidewalks in front of schools, that does take away bus services. And it's something to really keep in mind in that sense where you have families that are depending on those bus services. When we're improving our infrastructure itself, those types of issues could come across. As of now, we just got noticed for the Kensington Trails residents that bus services are going to be taken away because now Chappa has a sidewalk there. So now that could affect about 100 or 200 kids moving forward. So for those who are stating, well, we need sidewalks in front of Wallace, we need sidewalks in front of Lehman going to Bunton or go forth, we have to be very careful as far as what, what kind of the, the good and bad that might come along with it. So residents need to keep that in mind as, as we continue to move forward on that.
And, and you bring up an excellent point there. It's a state mandated law. So it's not something that the school district can circumvent. It's mandated by the state. It, it has to apply when it comes to sidewalks. And that's why I always think, you know, before we start building a lot of sidewalks, let's look in and talk to the residents that live there, see what the, share with them what the pros and cons are, and see what they want to do if, if they want us to move forward as a city. Because at the end of the day, it's, they live there, they, they get to decide what moves forward, right? If we have the funding for it in, in our budget. But yeah, you got to be real, real careful because, you know, you'll have 100, 200 people here upset because they lost bus service and, and because of a Facebook post or something like that. So always got to be very conscious of the people that actually live there and engage them when we're moving forward. So you bring up an excellent point, Councilmember Tobias. And yeah, I, I remember when I first got on the budget, I went, I'm, I'm on the dais, I wanted to build all kinds of sidewalks. And I found out about that state law and it, it just, I was like rats.
Maybe we leave one panel out.
Yeah.
It's not safe, right to school anymore, just one panel.
Just one panel.
One panel, yep, definitely.
It's got to be a continuous sidewalk with pedestrians. And I know we advocate a lot for that.
Take that state.
But at the same time, it's, you got to look at the pros and cons with, with all of that. And, you know, the residents are always important. We need to have that infrastructure. We need to have those sidewalks for students and people who walk and run, or whatever it is that you got to have. But you've got to look at the good and the bad, or the pros and cons of having those sidewalks, especially in front of schools.
And then going back on your 3-1-1, Councilmember Tobias, yeah, I'm really excited about this moving forward because it's going to be a one-stop shop for residents. I mean, they can now call the 3-1-1 or log on and get answers instead of getting switched over from department to department. Now being able to access this service is going to be a game changer for when residents are trying to apply for something or looking for information. It's going to be, it's going to be something I'm really looking forward to. It's going to be amazing. So yeah, thanks, staff, for the wonderful job they're doing on that right now.
We did identify that funding for the Hayes County Women's Shelter. Does anyone have the number, Chief or Pravez? I think we've been exchanging it.
Yeah, so the budget is there, $15,000 next year, but I couldn't answer the performance. What have they done? Maybe Chief can add.
We can come back with the performance, but the funding is in there going forward.
I just would like to know if we have increased service with them, maybe we can consider increasing the funding. It's just, I don't know exactly how much are we utilizing the services with them. I do know that they provide services for the city of Kyle, and probably not only with the police department, but just supporting residents of Kyle.
I know we come back, typically enact a future as a community, but as far as those metrics, I don't have them. It's hard to get them.
Thank you.
We'll be glad to get it together and send it to you. I'm sorry.
Those metrics live with the facility, not us. And we'd ask for those from the Women's Center, from the food bank, and from the mental health court, all which directly impact our residents and could very well receive funding from us or some services that we need to provide for that. But we need those numbers for all three of those and any others that serve our community.
Okay. Yeah.
We'll be glad to get that together.
All right, anyone else? All right, we're going to reconvene at 11:45 sharp. Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. So the only item that's remaining is the council's proposed budget. I don't know if you all had time to go through the slides and look at them. Brian is proposing some changes to help bring about the accountability and the direction that we gave with regards to our overall budget and our travel budget. All that said, you know, these last few months have been kind of challenging for me, trying to navigate a lot of political situations that, you know, just don't necessarily, there's not necessarily a handbook for it. Sometimes your, your intentions don't translate into the public. And so, you know, as y'all are aware, you know, earlier this year, we took a vote that became controversial to allow for the council to receive insurance as full-time employees. If anybody knows me, that's something I've pursued for a long time, is increasing the standard and for what we expect of ourselves as well as our staff and the community, and this was a consistent move forward. However, you know, we, we made a, we made a decision to move forward because we were told at the time that it was, you know, a legal maneuver for us to make and that it would not be in violation of the charter. I took that and moved forward, led the council forward. We had a conversation about it and took a vote. And, you know, since then, I'll just have to say that what I've come to realize is that while maybe we did not in any way legally or technically violate the charter, but it is possible that, you know, we violated the spirit of the charter. And I think that the reason that the feedback has been so strong has been in part because there are those who, you know, maybe don't want to see us succeed or maybe, you know, have motivations, but in large part because we didn't follow the rules that we and that I worked very hard to lay out with the public in that process. And so, you know, for that, I just want to apologize. And so my recommendation, and then, and then two other things, that there's been a lot of commentary about our expenses and food and beverage locally spent, what it's for. There is no notation on it. I have been hesitant to want to notate things on receipts because as you've seen over the last few months, those, those items have a tendency of being weaponized politically. But that being said, if you take away the emotion of it and look underneath at, you know, what should be taking place, the public does have a right to know, I think, if we spend money on food and beverage, especially locally, because there's no way to know exactly what that is. We should write down on the receipts what the purpose of the expenditure is for, and if, if other people are receiving food outside of us, that we should write that down and include their name. I think that is actually appropriate, even though, and it'll probably make us sometimes think maybe we shouldn't do that, you know? And so I, I want to make that recommendation. And then thirdly, there's been commentary about, on our expense policy, what is an appropriate amount of a per diem for food as well as traveling hotels, and what that should look like. And the policy that's in place that sets the, the hotel fee at $130 or something like that is, there's, it doesn't, it's not achievable. So it's in, basically, it's a part of our policy that you could just say is in default because there are no hotels of that price. It shouldn't have been an amount, it should have been a standard. And so what I'd like for us to do in an effort to promote transparency and try to help provide a bridge towards goodwill, instead of going through the council budget now, would be to actually reconvene a week from today, which would be the 3rd of August, maybe at 9 o'clock. I don't think it'll be a long meeting, and go over four total, making four total changes. Number one, to repeal the ordinance establishing insurance for the council's full-time employees. Number two, to change the expense reimbursement policy to require that local food and beverage expenses from council members shall be, as well as itemized, also notated for the purpose, including if other people are involved in the expenditure, their name should be put down. And then, number three would be a change to the policy that would allow for us to have a limit that's really clearly defined as far as what food amount we should spend on food, as well as a standard for when we're traveling, how close to the, in a venue we should be, or what the standard of the room rate should be, not necessarily a number, but a standard, you know, so that any upgrades or if we're spending more for a meal in a particular situation than our per diem, then we'll know that that extra will be coming out of our paycheck, so to speak. And then finally, the overall council budget, which is what's being presented here, we could bring that back and go through that in detail at the 3rd, put it all together as a solo meeting on a Saturday, so anybody who wants to come, and then set it off with a public hearing. So it'd be a public hearing, staff would have time to make those changes and proposals, list it with backup material so everybody knows the actions that we're considering, the changes that we're talking about making, and we can come here, let them give feedback, and make those votes at that time. That's my, that's my recommendation as far as how we move forward. I don't want this particular item, these particular subject matters to, to stop us from achieving the great vision that was just set out in three and a half hours of budget presentation. It's too important, and I, I am sad that it kind of has come to this, to a position where we're having to make a sacrifice in order to achieve, but it's worth it. If you have to choose, you know, what, what do you value? For me, it's always going to be that CIP budget and the, the direction that we're moving as a city, and I don't want to do anything to inhibit that. And so that would be, that would be my recommendation. Does anybody have any thoughts on that? Councilmember Parsley?
Thank you. So I do think it would be great for us to come back in a week, having, you know, better policies and ordinances set in place to have this discussion. I really commend you for doing what you're proposing because I think it's great that, I feel like some residents will feel heard, and although I, you know, I will stick with the fact that I believe that the mayor should have health insurance, just because I know the amount of time that you put into it, and I have said this from the very beginning, not because I'm going to run for mayor at any time, but I do know that, but I do believe that you have put enough time into it, that you should be compensated appropriately to include probably health insurance. The only, the suggestion I would like to make, and this is, and I don't know how we can get this done, is like, for our traveling budget, I do think that that should be a separate cost, cost center, that we cannot be dipping into another different line items in order, if we are running out of it, I do think that there should be some sort of average that we can look into, you know, how much traveling has been done and what should be an appropriate amount of traveling. Not all of them are the same. Some of them are training, some of them are visits. Like, I believe that the last trip to Carmel was one of the most informative ones that I have been to, and there was no necessarily, you know, we didn't go to a convention like NLC or TML, none of that, but just understanding the flow of the traffic so we can picture what we're going to have down colors. I think all councils should have attended to this. But, so to that point, I do believe that we should have some sort of separate line item for traveling, not line item, but more like for it to be its own cost center, and I don't know, food and beverages should be something along those lines. But I'm, I'm open to suggestions and maybe to ask from staff to bring something back for us to revise.
Yeah, the direction is to come back on Saturday. We can certainly present, we had some of that information, we can present that to you. There's a number of different ways it could be done, but we could certainly bring it back if that's the direction of council.
And touching on travel, you know, it's, it's something that's really come up a lot, but what I would really encourage is my fellow council members, you know, not to put the burden solely on a couple of council members to do that traveling and to go out and do that research, just for everyone to pull their weight and do their share of, of, you know, going out and getting the information needed to move for projects forward. I always think that, you know, we all share a burden, and we should all be equally in that burden of traveling and getting that knowledge and bringing it back to the council. So I, I know that a lot of people have reached out and said, you know, we should come back. When you come back from a travel engagement, I don't call them, you know, trips because they're not trips, it's working when you get there. When you get there, you're working, you're in meetings, you're going. I mean, you don't really get much downtime, so it's about making sure that everybody's getting the information. I mean, it, it's easy to put the burden on one council member or a couple of council members, but really, as a council, all of us should be engaging and doing these, doing trips that they're allowed to do and get that information, bring it back to the dais. Because I know here, I mean, just this year alone, I, I've used up all my vacation time for, on behalf, behest of the city, so I won't be doing a, a long trip with my family. So, but I, I think that's why it's more important for every council member to pull their weight when it comes to going out and doing the research for anything that we're researching. I know, I know it's, I'm on soapbox right now, but it's just, it does put a burden on, on several of us, but if we all pull our weight when it comes to that, it definitely would help and probably alleviate some of the public's, you know, worry about certain council members traveling too much, you know, just sometimes it's hard to say no to staff, and especially when staff is depending on council members. But if everybody took their burden, share the burden, it would definitely help out.
Councilmember Tobias.
Thank you. First of all, Travis, I commend you for wanting to take this step, and you know, I've been one of the ones that have been vocal, that had been against the, the measures that were taken on the insurance and also questioning on the credit cards issue alone. So I'm glad we're going to try to find some consensus and agreement, and you and I've had several conversations about it. And so thank you for that, and thank you for listening to me as well. As far as the travel goes, I don't think it's so much, and I may just kind of have a different take on this mayor pro tem, it's not so much the way I look at it as a burden that all certain people travel and not pulling their weight. I think for me, that's where I rely on city staff to be able to provide that for me. My role as a city council member is to help guide the city in the direction that it needs to go. If there are trips that need to be taken to see certain types of areas to, to get a feel of it, I can understand that part. But I think that that's where I rely on city staff to be able to do that research for me and come back to me with those details, because that's what they do. They are running the city. Our job is to guide the city in those, those, those beheads. And I think where the conflict of interest gets into play, where you do have a lot of council members in the past and sometimes present, maybe going on trips to, of course, your, your goal is to improve our city, and you want to be able to gain those ideas, but at the same time, it may look like a, a conflict where you're, we as a city council are taking charge of making those decisions, and city staff maybe just feel like, hey, we're just going to do whatever council wants. The idea that Councilmember Parsley was bringing up, maybe like a travel reimbursement program, has the city maybe thought about also looking at not so much hiring a travel agency, but having a department that deals with travel for not only just council, but for employees themselves. And we can be part of that as well, to where we could say, here's a list of calendars of events, of training, TML is in October, other events are in April. We can pre-plan those ahead of time, because there's some of us, like myself, that have full-time duties, and it's hard for me to be able to put six months in advance to be able to take off for Carolina, Indiana, or Washington, because I still have to be able to provide my, my service to, to my full-time job. So some of us may not be able to have that luxury, in a sense, to be able to take the time off or sacrifice that time away. I think if we look at the travel itself to see what, if we are going to travel to other areas or other places, what is the most important that certain council members can go? If there's three can go to a specific area to go look at an event, let them go, and then another group can plan on it at another time, and then we can be reimbursed like that. And I have always thought of the idea, and I brought it up before, is to share with council where you went. Share with council what you've learned. Like, an example, Councilmember Parsley and Floris Cale and I, we went to the Mueller District just to go look and get a sight of how their structure, how their infrastructure was placed. We brought it back to council, and we brought it back to the people to say, hey, this is what we did. And I think by doing something like that, also opens the door for the public to see the transparency of why we went to this trip and why we're doing it, and, and it just gives a field for all of us to be involved in, in the experiences that you had, especially Carolina, Indiana. I've heard several people have gone three times already. I have yet to hear any kind of presentation about roundabouts and so forth, because if you're trying to change my mind on that, I got to see it. That's a perfect example of why you have to bring some of these items back for all of council in the city to see. So with that, Mayor, I do like your proposal. I will try to make the time for next Saturday, and hopefully we can come to a very positive resolution going forward.
I thought nine might be better than eight for the next one.
That's fine.
Is that okay? Is that what you were going to say? All right.
I have one last comment to Councilmember Tobias. As we were in Indiana, my thoughts were like, I wish Tobias was here. Because if you remember my change of vote over that roundabout near the school about a year or so ago, I think no matter how good staff could make a presentation to let us know that what was recommended was a roundabout, we still had residents, you know, speaking against it over and over and over again. And it isn't, I feel, and this is just my personal opinion, once you see how the traffic flows in the system and how well it works for certain cities if we are headed towards that direction, it makes it easier for elected officials to vote on something, having the presentation, and even better for us to explain it to the residents on why we take the votes we take, once you have had that experience. And I know that it won't always be the case, and I do believe that they sent over a presentation that I'm, that we should be sharing, because you're absolutely correct. We should have had some sort of presentation, sharing with the rest of council, you know, how, the importance of the trip and how good it was and what we learned from it. So I do recognize that. I don't think a presentation was done after the Indiana trip, and maybe it's something we can put together between the council members that went, but it is.
But it is, it is important for us to be able to see it and experience it in order for us to be able to explain to the residents, this is why I took the vote I took. Like, because I'm pretty sure you all know how much heat I got from changing the vote over that specific roundabout. I mean, some people said that I was getting back deals with somebody and executive session. So that will be my only comment on that.
Well, I, I would just say, I kind of, I think all three of your perspectives are right in, in their own, in their own way. And so the way to handle that best is through really good and transparent budgeting and policies that allow for us to communicate better with the public. But you're right that, you know, if we, if we go and experience and our mind is changed based on our research and we don't do a good job communicating to the residents who don't have that benefit, we're really not helping ourselves much there. It's what causes the conflict. And so we can, we can always do a better job of that. There have been times when we've tried to get more, you know, proactive, but it's hard to sustain that. We're all very busy. We're working, it's like your hair's on fire every minute of the day. It's hard, it's hard to have the time and space to be proactive. But to kind of bring it full circle, I think some of the problem is that we, our actions, because they're not so easily understood, they're easily manipulated and, and it also takes up a ton of our time away from being able to even be proactive. So I'm hopeful that this Saturday will be an opportunity for us as a council to take a collective new step, amend our policies to create more transparency and be more in line with what the public expects of us. And then also clear, clear the way for us to talk about the things that I know that we all care about. And it's not this. What we care about is everything else going on in the city and we owe it to the residents, I think, I owe it to them, to apologize and to do everything I can to put the important issues of the city back in the forefront. I want people here upset because they're upset with some plan that we're very well laying out for the city that impacts them as opposed to being here upset over something that doesn't impact them and is just mainly just controversy. And, and so it's our opportunity and I'm committed to leading us through that. And I do apologize, like I've said before, because I felt like I stepped forward and, was willing to lead us down a path that I wish I hadn't. And that's, that's my fault. So anyway, all right, I'd like to, if we're good with it, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager to set a special meeting for next Saturday, August 3rd at 9:00 AM, to have that meeting start with a public hearing and to have three items be placed on the agenda. First, consider approval of an ordinance repealing, ordinance 1310, which authorized the mayor and council to receive health insurance, same as full-time employees. Two, consider approval of changes to the city council's credit card and/or travel policy to make amendments to the policy as we have discussed with notation of localized food and beverage expenditures, as well as a policy that outlines per diems and a standard for food and beverage and hotel. And number three, the city council's operating, proposed operating budget for fiscal year 24, 25 for us to review and amend.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, second by Councilmember Tobias, is their discussion on that motion. Is that good, Amy? Did I get it? Anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries five to zero. Motion adjourned.
Second.
All right, we adjourned. Thank you all.